I'm a resident fellow in the Education Policy Studies Division, and I am honored to serve as the moderator for what will be three very great panels to talk about a subject that not only changed American education, but also changed American society. Brown v. Board of Education I, but in particular, Brown v. Board of Education II. I am the proud husband and dad of three daughters. One daughter is five years old, the middle daughter is seven years old, and the oldest daughter is 22. So obviously, I like challenges. And in our conversation about today's event, she said, "Dad, why are we having a conversation about Brown? Wasn't that 60 years ago?" And I said, "And the fact that you raised the question is exactly why we need to have a conversation about Brown, in part, as a reminder of what America was like 60 years ago." We have to remember that it was fresh on the minds of millions of Americans in 1955, that year prior, the Brown decision, supported unanimously by the Supreme Court, said that separate but equal had no place in American education. You fast forward a year, and now it's time for the court to give directives to the states. The role that school boards, teachers, legislatures, but also federal judges, what role would they play in moving forward with Brown? And so I reminded her, as we should remind ourselves, that every generation needs a reminder of what it was like in the past to understand today and to have a better idea of how we move forward in the future. To my daughter, the idea that American-style apartheid was a part of our nation's history with its ideas going all the way back to the end of the Civil War is unimaginable. That actually shows the level of progress we've made in 60 years. But there are also some lingering ideas and programs and practices that are still in place. And so what better place to have a conversation about Brown v. Board of Education II than here at the American Enterprise Institute? We have three panels. The first panel will focus on the courts and schools. The second panel will focus on demography and schools. And the last panel will focus on innovation and schools. I would like to thank all of you who are here today, here at AEI. I'd also like to welcome our guests who are watching live through video stream. For those of you who are watching live, tomorrow, we will have the entire event online at AEI. I would also like to welcome our C-SPAN viewers who are here as well. Our first panel, again, we're going to talk about courts and Brown. And we have four people, all qualified, to have a very interesting conversation about Brown. I'm going to start from my far right and move over to the left. Our first speaker will be Professor Mildred Robinson. For 30 years, she has been a professor at the University of Virginia School of Law. She's an expert in taxation and finance, particularly with a focus on school inequalities. She has an expertise in Brown on two fronts. One, of course, is writing law review articles. But second, she published a book, published in 2009 by Vanderbilt University, The Law Touched Our Hearts, where she had an opportunity to speak to at least 40 people who were in elementary and secondary schools at the time of Brown. And so she's going to bring a perspective to this conversation across time and law. Second, we have Leslie Heiner, who is the vice president for programs at the Milton Friedman Family Foundation. The Friedman Foundation is committed to the ideas of educational choice. Leslie travels the country, speaking to state lawmakers about the importance of choice and what it means for families and schools. Leslie is able to do this with a great level of fluidity because she, in fact, had a role in shaping education in the state of Indiana. She is the first woman to serve as chief of staff to the Speaker of the House in Indiana. She was also chief of staff for the state senate president. And so Leslie, not only is an attorney, but spends a lot of time working at the state level. And we know that the state level, here's where you're going to find a lot of the education policies taking place. We have Tom Sines, who is the president of MALDEF, the Mexican-American Legal Defense Fund. It is the largest organization in the country focused on making sure that Latinos' civil rights in education, housing, voting, and other areas are in place. He spent four years working with the former mayor of Los Angeles. And in his current role, he has actually been lead counsel in a number of cases, representing all children, but in particularly Latino families. And knowing that there's going to be a rise in the number of Latino children in the United States, particularly in the public school sector, there's a need to make sure that we have a conversation across the board. Our last speaker is Stephanie Monroe. Stephanie is a former assistant at the U.S. Department of Education in the Office of Civil Rights. She worked there from 2005 to 2009. In her role, she played a tremendous role in not only working with federal policy, but also federal funds, and making sure that our laws in place, dealing with discrimination based upon race and other areas, were addressed by the U.S. Department of Education. And she was there during the time when President George W. Bush was in office. The way we will move forward is each person will open with a presentation. Some have a PowerPoint, some do not, not just for this panel, but throughout. After we finish with the last PowerPoint or last presentation, I will then open it up for a moderated Q and A with myself. The questions that I have will have a great dialogue, and then we will open it to the audience for a Q and A. For those of you who are watching live stream, you can hashtag at Brown v. Board 60. You can also send questions to us, and we'll see if we have an opportunity to address them. So I would now turn the panel over to Professor Robinson, who will open. We will then work all the way, our way to the left, and then I will open a moderated session. So again, welcome to AEI, Professor Robinson.
Thank you. Okay, how's that? If any of you are wondering whether Gerard and I are related, we are not. But we are longtime friends. So as I understood it, I'm supposed to give the view from about 30,000 feet. Is that correct? Okay. Let's see. So here we are. The Importance of Brown, I don't have to remind you of this language. You are probably all quite familiar with it. This is the importance of education, and this is a theme that we see throughout both federal and state court decisions. Whenever they're talking about education, it is recognized to be probably the linchpin for American democracy. If we don't have an educated and enlightened citizenry, I don't think that there's much we can do to keep it together. Brown's unanimous holding, of course, is that separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. And there is a wonderful, a series of articles to talk about that language and how meaningful it is, as well as how the court was able to cobble a unanimous decision. These quotes are taken from the book to which Gerard alluded that talked about the experience of those of us who were schoolchildren in 1954 when Brown was decided. It, we can't pick up the voices of the five-year-olds today, but these are voices of nine-year-olds, 10-year-olds, teenagers at that point, from an Alabama writer who was in the third grade in Alabama, obviously Alabama, in the Baldwin County Training Schools at the time. She remarks on a reality of busing. All black students within a 40-mile radius were bused to that school. To show that this was not, segregated schools was not purely a southern phenomenon, here's one from a youngster in Pennsylvania who was a fourth grader at the Gerard College in Philadelphia, a private enterprise, as it was, nonprofit, that had been founded to educate poor white male orphans. And he talks about his experience there. From Georgia, a writer who was blind and who talked about the fact that educational facilities for blind students were segregated. That makes a lot of sense. First grader from Mississippi who felt the threat of it coming for years and who was reassured by the local newspaper that said that it might be months or years away. This was in 1954. And finally, from my own essay in South Carolina, nothing happened for a very long time. What was the trouble with Brown I? Schools were rigidly segregated, of course, 17 states plus the District of Columbia, this was the jury. States otherwise were segregated because that was custom. That was the way the society did it. Moreover, the Supreme Court had not specified any steps that were to be taken to alter that reality. American life was in general segregated. De jure, de facto, it was the same effect. The decision, of course, spoke to de jure segregation, but had nothing to do with de facto segregation. Nevertheless, segregation was a national mindset, and that was reflected in a number of ways, housing, employment, access to public goods generally. The upshot, in the South, there was no voluntary effort to end segregated schools. From Mississippi, I was shocked to know the death of perfidy to which persons whom I know, who were my parents' friends and whose children I had grown up with, sank in their efforts to maintain a segregated school system. So we move on to Brown II, with all deliberate speed. The Supreme Court had failed to insist on Southern compliance, and in the 1955 hearings, we know of the following colloquy between the Chief Justice and an attorney from South Carolina who was named Rogers. Chief Justice, but are you willing to say here that there would be an honest attempt to confirm to this decree, that is, from the Supreme Court? If we did not leave it to the district court? Rogers, no, I am not. Let us get the word honest out of there. Warren, no, leave it in. Rogers, no, because I'd have to tell you that right now, we would not conform. We would not send our white children to Negro schools. He continued, not until 2015 or 2045. So here we are, 2015. With all deliberate speed from the viewpoint of the children. Thank you. North Carolina, first grade, 1959. Schools were segregated, and they stayed that way through first grade, junior high. Freedom of choice plans were extant at the time, but we all know about freedom of choice plans. I recently talked about these with my students in my seminar at home, and to my surprise, and somewhat disappointment, actually, they were completely unaware of what freedom of choice plans were. Another writer born in Mississippi, did not attend student integrated schools until 1970-71. From Louisiana, I finished high school in Atlanta without ever experiencing a day of the segregated education. In fact, between 1954 and 1964, the, we understood that segregation was unlawful, but segregation was society's preferred social system. And the writer from Florida throughout the 1950s and well into the 1960s, the signs and shackles of American apartheid defined the landscape of central Florida and the country in general. What happened? We saw the action move to Congress. In 1964, 10 years after Brown I, H E W, according to an H E W study, at that point, only 2.4% of African-Americans and Souths were attending largely white schools. Those were the border states, low-hanging fruit. Those schools desegregated easily. Freedom of choice plans were extant. Brown gave us token integration only. And so, we might ask, why Southern resistance was so firmly entrenched? Clearly, the mindsets that effectuated segregation remain unchanged during that era, and everything in the governmental structure from Congress down reinforced that. In Congress, there was no congressional support. We had the Southern Manifesto, where the Southern senators who were in charge led the drafting of a decree that attempted to find the Brown I and Brown II decisions unconstitutional. We had tepid presidential support at best. Eisenhower was not a great fan of school desegregation. Southern governors were open and notorious in their resistance. We remember Farber's with the National Guard, Wallace, segregation today, segregation yesterday, segregation forever. Southern states, massive resistance. My own state of Virginia, we had schools in Farmville close for five years. Southern society, this was the Southern way of life. Segregation was the way it was. The rest of the country tolerated it, and until the televised violence late in the 1960s, really didn't feel any part, any part of it at all. So we saw action, as I said, move from the Supreme Court to Congress. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 opened the door for progress because now we finally had a little cloud behind the decree in the form of penalties. Basically, if schools did not make progress desegregating, then the loss of federal aid would follow. We had a brief foray, again, by the Supreme Court into the area. San Antonio versus Rodype Rodriguez in 1973 caused a shift to, had really, a shift to a financial focus with spending adjustments which were intended to reach school districts which were obviously underfunded. District Court was sympathetic, the Supreme Court was not, finding the wealth was not a suspect classification, although education, while important, was not explicitly provided for in the Constitution. More on the importance of education, the effect of Brown in San Antonio from the Supreme Court point of view. Again, education is a matter of paramount importance, but it's not a right guaranteed by the federal Constitution. It was not going to be, there was no discrimination on the basis of wealth, and we saw changes, of course, in the polity in general following 1954. We have a shift to the states. State constitutions all have language, making education an explicit right, but the language varies, and there's no common formulation in the way in which the right is expressed. Further, there's no consensus from state to state. States have varied in response to attempted litigation, sometimes finding a constitutional violation, and sometimes not. Most recently, we know that schools are resegregating. The proportion of blacks attending majority-white schools has declined, and it presently is at the lowest level since 1968. The most segregated students are white, and there's a lot of data out there. I won't go into all of that now. I want to hit these last points. At this point, we know that racial segregation is entrenched in urban schools. The nation's largest city school systems account for a shrinking share of total school enrollment and remained overwhelmingly non-white and virtually segregated. There are continued economic challenges, especially for urban schools, which continue to be significantly underfunded. We see continued white flight, and housing segregation remains entrenched. And finally, we see a reversal in momentum in general. And most troubling, we see a persisting economic gap. So where from here? How am I doing? Is racial desegregation a realistic option? Is economic desegregation a realistic, achievable goal? What effect from increased spending? And public education in general seems to me increasingly balkanized. Every child for himself, or sometimes, no child left behind, or every child for himself. In thinking about possible remedies, with regard to race and school desegregation, there seems to be increasing disinterest and a history of limited institutional effectiveness, particularly if we look to the courts. School finance litigation has worn various hats. It's come in the form of equity theory. It's come in the form of adequacy theory, and sometimes, I suppose, some hybrid. That has shown mixed results. Economic desegregation has been unevenly attempted and received, and finally, congressional intervention is unlikely. Oops. We know that ultimately, we'll get to the market. That's it for me. Thank you.
Good morning. Thanks, Gerard. It's a real honor to be here to talk about such an important issue and to know that there are so many people who still place education and how we get along together, how we serve our children for next generations, as being a priority. At the, pardon me, at the Friedman Foundation for Educational Choice, we believe that the parents should be empowered to choose whatever educational resources the parents decide are appropriate for their own children. In so doing, the parents have this opportunity to take control over the educational lives of their own children, instead of relying on the zip code assignment of schools or someone else to decide, if you live on one side of this line, you go to this school. If you live on the other side of the line, you go to a different school. School choice empowers parents. In 1955, with the Brown decision, the court ordered the public schools to be integrated, but with all deliberate speed. And so, as we've heard, given the conditions of race relations at the time, when people were very directly separated, not only by custom, but in many places, particularly in the South, by law, people were separated. The idea of giving power to parents, to black parents, to have control over the educational lives of their own children was something quite revolutionary, although clearly, that would have been the preferred result of the Brown decision. Sadly, as it turned out, the implementation of Brown very quickly met with resistance, but that resistance also led to the implementation of Brown being more of a numbers game, where the achievement of those black students that it was designed to serve became obscured in many cases, and it was more important to get the numbers right than to pay very close attention to what was happening to those individual children whose lives were being so directly impacted by the decision. Integration has proven to be quite elusive, even today. We still struggle. We'll hear later about continuing segregation in schools, but we also find that the achievement gap today between black students and white students, Latino, Hispanic students and white students, is unconscionably large and very difficult to move. So let's see what we can learn about Brown. Let's go back to the beginning. Now, if you take a look at the picture on the screen, you'll see these adorable children. So the first thing that struck me when I saw this picture, I have to admit, was the little girls who were wearing white anklets, which I also was forced by my mother to wear when I was a little girl. But immediately, though, I felt this kinship with these kids who were standing there looking very neatly dressed. And yet, realizing that these were the children who were at the heart of all the controversy, should they have the right to actually attend a decent school or not? And what did their parents want? Well, their parents just wanted them to be treated like the other kids. They wanted their children to have the same opportunities. They didn't want those opportunities to be blocked because the color of their skin was different. It just made no sense. Brown, I think, really got to the heart of taking that, taking that hard look at segregation and what was happening in society, that separating each other really didn't make any sense at all. So in many ways, I think Brown was very successful in compelling people to look at each other as human beings and as equals for perhaps what may have been the first time. But every lawsuit needs plaintiff. Now, take a look at the parents. These are the parents of these students in question. Now, clearly, advancing civil rights must have been very, very dear to their hearts at the time. And yet, I just have to believe that as parents who are seeking for better educational options for their children, that when they were faced with the adversity and the violence and the threats that came as this litigation was pursued, I just have to believe as a parent that it was their love of their own children, their instincts, their natural instincts, that drove them to continue and to continue to fight for what was right. Now, lovely, lovely school building in Little Rock, Arkansas. This is Central High School. This was the site of one of the first most notorious battles over the implementation of Brown. So this is Brown, or this is Central High School, when Brown was, when they attempted to implement Brown here and integrate the school. The governor brought in the state National Guard to escort in nine children to integrate the school. And then he said, "Well, violence was threatened, so the children would have to leave." The president then said, "Yeah, sorry, we're going to implement Brown." And federal troops were then brought in, and the children went back to school. And those troops stayed there for months, almost the entire school year, if you can imagine such a thing as sending your child to this school under those circumstances where it was necessary for armed guards to accompany your own children to school just so they could have a shot at getting a decent education. This was the real-life impact of Brown. Now, a good friend of mine was in the first graduating class from Central High School in Little Rock, and she explained this to me. Growing up in Little Rock, it was very common for her to see Ku Klux Klan parades and marches. And whenever that happened, her parents would just yank her inside, say, "Oh, you know, come on, read a book, come inside." So this was just the normal way of life. But she attended an all-black school up until the time that she went to this high school. And she talked about how winters were rough, it was cold. Well, you know, you'd have to wear your coat to school because the heat wasn't so good. And, oh yeah, the books were old, and, well, you'd get a pencil, maybe. Supplies weren't really very good. But they loved their school. When they arrived at Central High School in Little Rock, they were shocked. It was like winning the lottery. Suddenly, all the books were brand-new. There was a science lab that no one had ever seen or might have even thought of before. Here's a science lab, bright, shiny, brand-new, and they didn't have to wear their coats to school in the wintertime. So it was pretty exciting at first, except that it became very clear to them that no one really wanted them to be there. Teachers were polite, and even the kids, after all the commotion, were polite. But that sense of community, that sense of belonging, and as she explained it, that real joy of learning that comes from being in a place where you know you're wanted and you want to be there, that joy of learning went away. And they entered into the very sterile environment of the implementation of Brown. So these were very difficult times, when you had state governors who would defy orders of the U.S. Supreme Court. Nonetheless, there were leaders at the time and later who spoke about the necessity of people to do good and to do the right thing and to stand up. And even though it may be hurtful, you may lose your job, people may try to throw a Molotov cocktail through the front picture window, if it's the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do, and you stand up and you do that. And if you don't stand up and do the right thing, then you really have lost your soul. If nothing else, Brown and its implementation to, and its attempts to integrate, I believe, go to our very, to our very souls, to the crux of who we are as human beings. Do we respect each other, or do we not? So in Little Rock, Arkansas today, things are a little different. This is a hearing for a universal voucher that occurred in the House Education Committee just two years ago. This is something that may have been unthinkable in years past, to believe that black families could have an equal opportunity to access any educational opportunity that was available, any, any educational opportunity. And yet, this hearing was very well-received, and as you can tell, the attendance by black families was really, it was really inspiring. And again, I saw on that day these parents, whose sole motivation was their natural instinct to protect their children and to preserve for their children an opportunity to be happy, to be successful in life. That's it. So today, we're finding that there are some new voices, new voices of empowerment that are stepping up. Yes, we're still facing segregation in our schools. Yes, we're still facing this enormous achievement gap between black and white students. And yet, there is a hope that has arisen by parents and also by students, like this young man who's a high school student, just thrilled by the opportunity that maybe, if we treat each other as equals, there's an opportunity here for every child to access whatever educational opportunity is necessary for that child to succeed. And that's the new goal. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, Gerard Robinson, for including me in this important convening about the remedial decision.
Good morning, and thank you, Gerard Robinson, for including me in this important convening about the remedial decision in Brown. As you all know, the Brown versus Board of Education decisions, one and two, were the product of years, indeed decades, of struggle in the African-American community, and in particular, courage and sacrifice on the part of African-American parents, and in particular, a litigation strategy pursued over decades by the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, an organization that my organization, Maldef, founded in 1968, was consciously designed to mimic in using the legal system to achieve civil rights aims for the Latino community. But without diminishing any of that important legacy of the African-American community, I hope many of you are aware that in the Latino community, there had been parents and community leaders who struggled against school segregation in the southwestern United States and used the court system, beginning in the 1920s, to attempt to challenge that segregation. One case in particular, Mendez versus Westminster School District, a precursor to Brown, attracted the attention of the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, which chose to file an amicus brief in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals covering the western United States in that case because of its potential implications for their work leading up to Brown. Now, the Mendez case, like many of these cases, involved segregation under the guise of language. There would be “Spanish-speaking” schools. Of course, students were not assigned based on any assessment of English fluency. Instead, they were assigned based on appearance, based on surname, based on who their parents were. These were, in effect, Mexican schools as they were also called. And Mexican schools, as you would imagine, were demonstrably inferior to those provided to white students in the same school districts, from the physical plant, the facilities, up to curriculum, textbooks, up to teachers, clearly inferior schools to which Mexican-American students were regularly assigned. Now, the Mendez decision in the Ninth Circuit concluded that that segregation was not permitted in California. It didn’t lead to the Supreme Court, it didn’t lead to a Brown-like decision because the Ninth Circuit concluded that state law, I note probably incorrectly in hindsight, but the court concluded that state law in California did not permit segregation of Mexican-American students, and that ostensibly meant that it would no longer occur. But as with Brown, implementation and remedy became a bigger challenge, and segregation continued, and in particular, the provision of inferior schooling to Latino students continued throughout the southwestern part of the country where the majority of the Latino community was concentrated at the time. With that backdrop, I will say to you that Maldef continues to be involved in these issues at many levels. We actually still have today, in 2015, at least two desegregation cases alive and living in federal courts that we are involved in, one in Texas and one in Tucson, Arizona. Both of them continue to create great controversy when there is intervention by the courts to try to change what local decision-makers have decided to do with regard to any number of educational issues, and that, of course, characterizes the implementation of Brown across the board. We are also involved today in challenging other markers of unequal educational opportunity, including, as Professor Robinson has indicated, using state constitutions to attempt to establish a right to an equal and adequate education. And we still see patterns of inequity in how resources, from money all the way up to teaching, to curriculum, to facilities, are distributed within states. We’re currently involved in what has to be probably the fifth or sixth such challenge in the state of Texas, because in the state of Texas, you have to keep beating them over the head to get them to do what’s right, and we’re still making small steps toward getting there with a case that’s now pending in the Court of Appeals. And I’m proud to say that my lawyers have recently, within the last year, in fact, almost exactly a year ago, I believe, obtained the first ruling in New Mexico, that that state’s constitution provides a guarantee of an adequate and equal education. We now are in the arduous process of collecting the expert testimony and other evidence to back up the existence, continuing existence and persistence of an equal system in that state. With all of that said, it is a slice of what I think Brown II, the remedial decision, a very short decision, foreshadowed with respect to education and the court system. Now, given the entrenched and very bitter opposition throughout the South to Brown I, any allusion in Brown II to local control, local decision-making deference was going to have the effect of being multiplied many-fold in implementation. And I think that that’s what we’ve seen. That’s why it took decades for the real first steps toward integration in the South to begin to occur. It’s also a foreshadowing of what we saw in terms of the creative ways of trying to get around the Brown mandate. And I’ll note one here because it, too, involved the Latino community. There arose, in the 70s in particular, what came to be called Texas Integration, in which school systems, often, at least initially with court sanction, would integrate African-Americans and Latino students, but not touch white students and their superior schools at all. Now, that so-called Texas Integration, and even though it clearly got its name from the state where it took its greatest hold, was characteristic of approaches to implementing Brown really across the southwestern United States, even resonating in California of all states. I say that as a dyed-in-the-wool, dedicated California. And even in California, as late as the late 1970s, the notion was raised by a judge that you could comply with an integration mandate by simply mixing black and brown students and leaving the white students isolated in their superior facilities, their superior curriculum, their superior schooling across the board. But the foreshadowing in Brown II also came to its perhaps greatest fruition in the case previously cited by Professor Brown Rodriguez versus San Antonio Independent School District, less than 20 years after Brown, when the Supreme Court decided to basically, virtually, completely abdicate any federal court responsibility for equal educational opportunity by concluding that education is not a fundamental right, despite the very strong language in Brown that, to this day, gets cited by politicians, by courts, by anyone who is interested in once again establishing the priority of equal educational opportunity as an imperative in this country. But with Rodriguez, we were left to using state constitutions, state courts, often decisions by popularly-elected state court judges, who would then defer far too much to also popularly-elected state legislatures, who would choose to do a bare minimum, indeed a fraction of what needed to be done, to address the problems identified and ruled upon by those state court judges. That’s the regime we remain under today, and I revert to the mechanism of segregation that I described at the beginning, when segregation of Latino students was often through the proxy of language, no real assessment of language, but they were going to be put in Spanish-speaking schools. The modern-day equivalent of that is how English learners, true English learners, are treated in education generally across the board. Without any federal court intervention, English learners are viewed by too many local decision-makers as having no political power because of an assumption, backed up certainly by some fact, that their parents are not voters, that their parents are not influencers, and too often then, particularly in areas that have, for the first time, significant numbers of English learners, Latino students primarily, they are neglected and not provided with the equal educational opportunity to which they are entitled. So, this commemoration of Brown versus II has to recognize that it foreshadowed a near-complete abdication of responsibility at the federal level, not just in the courts, but regrettably, too often in the executive and the Congress as well. I note that, as many of you are aware, Congress is currently considering a reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, a product of the civil rights movement now 50 years old, and unfortunately, much of what they are considering would significantly diminish the federal role in ensuring equal educational opportunity at both the administrative and legislative level. So, Brown versus II, this is an important occasion to assess where we have come, beginning from that very slight difference in language to local control and local decision-making, to a near-total abdication of federal accountability, federal interest, federal role in ensuring that equal educational opportunity, the bedrock principle of Brown. We often talk about Brown and do, and appropriately, about integration. It did begin a series of decisions that dismantled segregation, not just in education, but in transportation and in every other area of life in the South. But, at bottom, Brown is an equal educational opportunity decision, and Brown II foreshadowed where we are today with an inadequate role in ensuring that equal educational opportunity becomes a reality across the country.
Well, I’ll go ahead and get started, and hopefully we can bring that on board. So, thanks again, Gerard, for inviting me to speak on this important, sobering topic. I think it’s always good, as we’ve heard other panelists do, to just remember and to put ourselves in the place of individuals who were impacted by Brown, what was happening around the time of Brown versus Board of Education. So, at the time of Brown, many black and white schools, especially those in the South and in many urban centers, were vastly different. Per pupil expenditures for white schools were four times greater than those expenditures for blacks. The student-teacher ratio for whites was 28 students to one teacher and 47 blacks, students to one teacher. White schools generally had flush toilets, blacks had outhouses. Whites rode buses to schools, particularly in the South, while blacks walked, sometimes for miles. African-Americans were forced to use old and sometimes outdated hand-me-down textbooks, but whites had new books. And many schools for blacks were decrepit, their teachers were paid lower, and students lagged behind on average two grades, two grades more than their affluent peers. The desegregation orders following Brown were important to remove the vestiges of slavery. However, in many cases, deseg orders perpetuated the notion of blacks being unworthy, of being treated equally or incapable of managing resources or taking control of schools and their communities. Desegregation also presented hardships for many of these families. In a totally, we know that more burdens were placed on black families. Black teachers often were fired when white and black schools merged, and it was the black schools that were often closed, making it more convenient for white students and families. In some cases, desegregation was achieved by moving one or a handful of black children to a predominantly-white school that may or may not have been a better-performing school. It meant, in many cases, moving better teachers from black schools into white schools. And in almost every case, it did not mean providing additional resources that were needed to bring those schools up to a better level. So, did Brown succeed? Well, the answer depends on what you view as the goal and whether you view the goals of Brown as a means or an end. If the goal was to end adjourned government-sanctioned legal segregation, then yes, Brown succeeded. You no longer have legally sanctioned whites-only or Negro-only schools. But Brown was implemented in 50 states and thousands of school districts who had a great deal of leeway in terms of what was being done, how it was being done, how long it was going to take to be implemented. Attorney Thurgood Marshall thought the schools would be fully desegregated within five years. He was a little off. Brown ultimately focused on making schools less separate rather than on making them more equal. Did Brown succeed? Yes, in part. Over time, black and white achievement have both improved, but gaps remain. Resource shortages still exist, and even when resources are added to districts, some of these districts still do very poorly. Disparities in the discipline of blacks versus whites persist. Blacks continue to be overly identified in special education and under-identified for gifted and talented programs, and even magnet schools that were established to address these historic wrongs aren’t always hitting the target. So, let me tell you a little bit of my personal story. To paint a more personal picture, I grew up in Baltimore in a strong but poor black neighborhood. Everyone knew each other, families looked out for each other, we walked the neighborhood, went to church, struggled to make ends meet together. When one person in our neighborhood got laid off, other people brought meals by and babysat for them while they looked for a car. When one got a car, they often picked up groceries for the others who didn’t have one. Now, my family didn’t have a car for many years, but my mom walked my brother and I to school and to the library every Saturday morning so that we could each borrow our three books. We had dinners at my grandmother’s house on Sundays and never took a family vacation. So, in 1968, after Brown, I remember, 1968, 14 years after Brown, I remembered, on the left, when the first white girl entered our school. I was in fifth grade, 14 years after Brown. Later that same year, after the assassination of Dr. King, in Baltimore riots broke out, and my mom and dad learned that the school boundary lines had changed, which would force me to go to one of the more dangerous schools in the city. So, that was enough for my parents to get motivated, to pull together their resources, and to move us 30 minutes outside of the city of Baltimore. On the right, you see the picture of my class in Baltimore County. Looks a little different than the one on the left. I remember my first day of school in the county. I was one of about four blacks in fifth grade. We had shiny floors, pretty individual desks, and new books. Out of three classes, there were no more than two blacks in each and no black teachers in the entire school. Now, everyone was extremely friendly, but I have to tell you, boy, did I feel like a fish out of water. My mother, who’s 82, also grew up in Baltimore after moving from North Carolina, the segregated South. At 82, she still has regular contact with the students, with her friends, that she went to school with in Baltimore. She has monthly lunch club meetings with her friends, they talk regularly on the phone. In essence, there’s a lasting relationship, a sense of community and a shared pass. I have to tell you, I have none of that. My mom’s friends are all professionals, they’re white and they’re blue-collar workers, they have strong marriages, no divorces that I know of. My parents just celebrated their 59th wedding anniversary. But they grew up hard-working and poor, and for most of that time, in predominantly-black communities. The point is, they grew up in a community and most attended all-black schools their entire life. So, which of these scenarios is better? I don’t know. I feel like I was receiving a good, positive education in my elementary school in Baltimore. I feel like I received an equally-good education when we moved 30 minutes outside of Baltimore to the suburbs. And I look at my mom and her friends, and I feel like they’ve received good education, given what they’ve been able to accomplish in life. So, rather than answer the question, did Brown work, I want to know, how did Brown impact communities? Did it recognize that children live in communities? Did it work to build communities by respecting and empowering those communities? Did it send the best teachers to those schools that they were concerned about? Did it provide the needed financial and other resources to those communities? Did it recognize that moving the best out of the community would somehow harm the community in the long run? And did we really think that sending a few blacks into poor white schools and sending the best black teachers to the white schools would somehow magically transform poor schools into something So, what are our challenges today? Our first challenge, I believe, is to focus on communities. We need to meet people where they are. I don’t believe that race is the primary issue in education today. I believe that the quality of education that’s available to all students, without respect to what zip code they live in, is actually the issue. Secondly, I believe that we need to focus on providing the best to those who need it the most. So, where do the best teachers go? Who’s being sent into the more challenging schools? Is it the senior, more experienced professional, or is it the recent grads? When teachers excel, what happens? Do we put those in those hardest-to-reach classrooms, or do we promote them out of the classroom into central administration? Is that what’s best for the children who need it the most? Third, I believe that we need to make decisions about what children need and not what adults need. What do we expect of children? Do we believe that all children can learn? When children underperform- When children underperform and we don't know why, why do we just simply label them special ed? We over-identify minorities in need of special education, we over-discipline them, we expel them, and we're beginning to see this trend reach down to kindergarten and even preschool with children being expelled before they even can get started. Fourth, I think that we need to respect that children and communities need options and they need more control. Communities and parents should be viewed and treated as partners, not as a burden. We must respect that skilled labor is also a great way for people to lift themselves out of poverty and reverse the trend that results in us eliminating vocational education in almost every school district in America. And fifth, we need to understand that there is a linkage between educational opportunity and housing policy. Vouchers for housing for lower-income families should be more easily redeemable in middle-class neighborhoods. Unfortunately, many in the middle class won't accept vouchers, and zoning prohibitions limit the availability of low and moderate income housing opportunities. Real education reform must include opportunities for families to move away from dysfunctional neighborhoods regardless of whether they are black or white. So in conclusion, the unanimous Brown ruling on May 17, 1954, was the landmark opinion that separate schools are inherently unequal. But does it therefore follow that the reverse is true, that integrated schools are inherently equal? The issue is much more complicated than that, and it's absolutely essential, and it was essential, that legally tolerated segregation was outlawed in this free country. But to conclude that simply mandating desegregation will make it all better, will improve student achievement, and perhaps even reduce poverty, is magic. And to now focus attention on what is being viewed as resegregation as the problem while not addressing what we know works to reform education fails to take advantage of the lessons we've hopefully learned.
Thank you for those very lively presentations. First question is for Professor Robinson. She mentioned the Southern Manifesto, and it was a document signed by at least 101 members of Congress, March 12, 1956. And the name of the actual document was called "The Declaration of Constitutional Principles." And that was not by mistake, it was a take in part going back 180 years to the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And if you look at the language there in 1956, you see similarities. But you also should take a look at the documents passed by states when they were succeeding from the nation, similar language. So the question for you to answer, and others can chime in, how big of a signal did the Southern Manifesto play in giving the states the right to do what it did?
My goodness Gerard, why didn't you just ask me something about taxes?[788.69][788.69](LAUGHING). I wish I had a great deal of insight, I wish I had any insight at all into that. Just in general, I would think that you have to remember, in a federalist system, the representatives in Congress are elected by the people in the states. And at the end of the day, we have to assume that the positions they take reflect the views of those who elected them. So I think it would probably be a stretch to say that the views taken in the Southern, the position taken in the Southern Manifesto influenced what was happening in the states. I think, in fact, it was the reverse. They were reflecting what the people at home felt and were telling them. This is a grassroots thing. When I talked about the factors that indicated, excuse me, entrenchment, that reflected entrenchment in 1955, that was society-wide. I started with Congress because Congress is the most representative body and it sits at the top, but I ended at the grassroots level, talking about societal attitudes in general. So I go back to my initial point, I think it reflected the attitudes at the time, but I don't think that those attitudes had the genesis there. Rather, I think they reflected what was happening at home.
Tom?
So I think, of course, that that's true. This is a reflection of what the strength of the opposition, the entrenched nature of it. But I also think you have to recognize that they called it constitutional principles to try to draw away from what Chief Justice Warren was at pains to create, which was a unanimous court, a unanimous opinion about what the Constitution meant. And clearly, these Southern Congress members were trying to assert a different constitutional point of view to draw away from that unanimity. And I certainly think it had the effect then of leading some governors and others to believe they had the power to engage in nullification, interposition exercises.
You mentioned nullification and interposition. You had a number of states from 1956 up to late 60s in a beginning passed the laws to basically say that the states cannot, the federal government cannot tell states what to do, since education is not a federal issue, education is nowhere mentioned in the Constitution, it's a state's rights. And it was a very interesting debate. You didn't hear the nullification and interposition movements at that time. The earlier time you heard that was during the Alien and Sedition Acts long ago. Leslie, you mentioned school choice and its importance. Freedom of choice in the South meant something different 1960s than today. It meant the creation of white segregated academies using public money, at that time called tuition grants, to go to school. There are people today who say that the reason they don't support school choice, particularly private sector choice, is because you're going to perpetuate the school choice of the 1960s. Is that true or false, and what do you think?
Well, that's a compelling question.[986.13][986.13](LAUGHING). I have to say first that if you look at everything surrounding Brown and what we've experienced over these many years, we've looked for solutions from the law. We've looked for solutions from Congress that's dragged its feet, I think that's being charitable. We've looked for solutions every place except for in each other. That seems to be the one place that we don't typically turn to look for answers, and yet that's, I believe, where we find the answers. In fact, I had to bring along this book. This book, it's kind of big. "This is Nothing But Testimony: Oral Argument at the U.S. Supreme Court." That's all. Now, it's a really small type. There's a lot of people saying a lot of things and really not achieving the results that they sought. So when you asked me this question about school choice and what happened with the freedom of choice and the segregation academies before, keep in mind that the one thing that Brown did well is that it ended state-mandated segregation. And so when people today talk about the segregated, or segregation academies of the past, keep in mind, those weren't academies that parents got together, created their own schools, and voluntarily decided, yeah, this is what we want to do. That's not what happened. This was state-created, state-ordered, state-directed funding, and if you had a white child, you would send your child to these academies that were allegedly private, but there was really nothing private about them. This was the action, the very direct action of the state to try to stop the implementation of Brown. Today, it is much different. So there's no state where the state government is mandating anybody to participate in any school choice program. Private schools aren't mandated to participate, parents aren't mandated to participate. It's an opportunity. If you want it, you may have it. If you want to participate as a private school, great. If you don't, well, then that's fine too. If you're a parent, you want the option to send your child to a different school, or in the case of education savings accounts, to be able to access a whole variety of different educational options, maybe classes from a public school, or a charter school, or a private school, or online courses, which are seemingly endless these days, then that's your right to take advantage of that opportunity or not. But the power, the real power, and this is what's so different from the way it was before, the power rests in the hands of parents. And those parents, who were the parents of those kids at the heart of Brown, that's all they were really fighting for. They were fighting for their kids and the right to control their own destiny. That really hasn't changed much in all these years. We're still trying to achieve the same goals.
Okay. Tom?
So at the risk of being the skunk at the picnic, which I find in lots of education discussions, that's my role, no matter who I'm speaking to. I think that we have to recognize that education is a very complicated endeavor. That's part of the tragedy of the abdication of a federal court role, is that courts have not been able to deal with our evolving understanding of what's necessary. What we have now learned after 60-plus years since Brown is, there is no single solution. We really have to look at different solutions and changing and evolving solutions. But we also have to learn the lessons of the past. And unfortunately, I think, even though they were state-mandated, it's quite clear that in the immediate aftermath of Brown, given free choice, we know what would result in the South. White students would be in segregated white schools by choice. And I think, assuming that in 2015, we're so far different, is too facile. And we have to recognize that if choice is going to play a part, as it already does through charter schools in public education, we have to be very careful about monitoring and constraining that in some circumstances, in part because lots of parents don't have all of the options available to them. And I say this, in addition, my side job, in addition to being president of Maldiv, I've been a member of the appointed Los Angeles County Board of Education for now almost 14 years. And what we see at the County Board of Education are a lot of appeals, appeals from inter-district transfer requests that have been denied by school districts. And that's an element of choice. And unfortunately, we see only a thin slice of the parents who would like to have their kids go to a better school. And those are just the parents who have the most resources, the most knowledge, the greatest ability to access this available choice mechanism. There are far too many other parents who don't have any of what would be necessary to exercise that choice. And we also, at the LA County Board of Education, are charter school authorizer, and I have supported very many charter schools being authorized. But there are too many other charter schools that I fear when they come before us. It's not stated, but what the organizers of those charter schools are most interested in doing is providing an avenue for certain parents to get away from schools, local schools that in their view are becoming too brown. And that's the nature of Los Angeles County, is that the Latino student population is now over 50% and growing. And there are parents and charter school operators who want to provide a mechanism for other kids to get away from schools
Sure.
...that are majority Latino. And that, I think, we have to remember, we are not so far removed from post-Brown that given individual choice, we wouldn't still end up with significant cadres of parents who would choose segregated settings, believing, in the case of white parents, that that would get them a better education.
Stephanie, and then Professor Robinson.
So this is such a big conversation. We can't possibly do it justice in the time that we have, but let me just remind us of this. Education is compulsory. If the government were to say, you must eat fast food at least once, one meal a day, and then say, and McDonald's has to be the restaurant that you go to. That's what public education is today, without choice. I think much of the choice movement today resulted, rose up because of the concern about quality, of the fact that we had 40 and 60% of children never making it to graduation. We have children making it to graduation who still aren't reading at a level that allows them to get a competitive job. And we know internationally where we fall. So there are a lot of reasons why parents want and deserve options. We should not saddle generations of children falling further and further behind while we try to figure out how to make the educational system work. So I don't think that choice is necessarily the best solution, but for right now, for that Band-Aid until we adults get our act together and figure out how to make this thing work, I think it's an option that we absolutely have to extend to parents so that they don't have to lose generations of children because we can't figure it out.
You know, in the law, we place a lot of reliance on default systems. And when we talk about vouchers, when we talk about charter schools, one of the things that struck me, I've been taking a closer look at providing education this semester because I'm doing a new seminar at home with my students. And one of the things that has struck me is how balkanized public education is becoming. It used to be primarily public-private, 90%, 10%, pretty reliably. But when we looked at the statistics, we saw that breaking down, not, we still have public and we still have private, generally speaking, whatever that means. I think that public is much more ambiguous, it's much more loose than it used to be. But on the non-public side, on the parental choice side, if you will, we have private schools, we have vouchers and charters, which are kind of a hybrid, but facilitate private choice. You have homeschooling, and sometimes I think every kid who's being homeschooled is in my neighborhood at home, because I see him in the middle of the day. Why aren't you in school? I'm homeschooled. I said, okay, why are you out walking the dog? And we also have a lot of students who are doing online education. That's all well and good. And I assume in that latter category, we're talking about people who have parental support. But I think we have to be concerned about that default system that serves the kids who don't have parental resources to get them out to do something different, or who are foreclosed for precisely the reasons that you talked about. There are only so many spaces in non-residential districts to accommodate concentrations of kids who are locked into areas that are characterized by underperforming, poorly-financed schools. And so I think that it's wonderful to talk about the varieties of ways in which kids can be educated, but I think we also have to be very attentive to the default systems and how well they're operated and how well they're funded. And by the way, Chief Justice Warren was the presiding judge in the Menendez case that you mentioned.
So Stephanie, of the people on the panel, you've got experience as counsel for the U.S. Committee on Health, Education, Pensions, and Labor, in a different way of spelling, LP. And you've also, at your role at Office of Civil Rights, what role, if any, can the federal government play in trying to bring about the spirit of Brown if we look at it primarily as integrating slash desegregating schools?
Well, the job of the Office for Civil Rights is to enforce those laws that pertain to children, making sure that children have access without regard to their race, their ethnicity, their language, their national origin, their sex. And unfortunately, I think that changes depending on who's sort of sitting in that chair. It should not. I mean, there should be a standard, and that standard should be consistent. It should be consistent across our country, but it definitely is a challenge. I think the Office for Civil Rights role that's very important is to be able to, and they do, in fact, respond to over 4,000 cases a year of allegations of some kind of wrongdoing that's happened in an elementary, secondary, or post-secondary school. And it's a very large issue. Most of those cases deal with children because of their disability, who've been not allowed to have access to services. We also see a lot of, we have the responsibility to make sure that the desegregation orders that remain, that we're reviewing them, that persistent with what the court said in the Ford ice decision, that we are discharging those school districts, that we feel they've made meaningful progress in meeting those aims, but that we are continuing to look, look at policies, look at processes to make sure that those school districts are not deliberately or through policies and practices resorting to some of the things that we were trying to avoid from the past. But we also can speak out very proactively, making sure, for example, that children who have a disability, who are very skilled in one area, are not because they happen to have a need in another area, prevented from being involved in AP and honor classes. So that's one of the positive things that we were able to do. OCR also has looked at, you know, sex-based discrimination. There are some schools in this country that still are, and perhaps appropriately so, we have boy schools and we have girl schools in New York City. They've got some wonderful schools that are sex-exclusive academies that do very well. And there are those who oppose that. And so we try to sit back as sort of the neutral arbiter of both fact and law, but I think making sure that those policies are as applied uniformly across the board, which is always a challenge, is what the role should be.
So it is now time for audience Q and A. We're going to have one person, possibly two, stand with a microphone. We have two rules- We have two rules here at AEI. Number one is to identify yourself and your organization affiliation. And second is to ask a question, not to give a speech. As we're actually getting ourselves together, one question I'd like, Tom, not to answer now, but to think about, is you mentioned the part about black and brown kids in LA being part of the desegregation map. I was in LA in the '70s and saw some of that happen. So much of desegregation in parts become what I call color-coding classrooms. And at some point, it'd be interesting to hear you weigh in. So we have a mic in the back. Just raise your hand and we'll have our person. There's a question in the back.
My name is Tom Talk. I'm the Director of the Center on the Future of American Education at Georgetown University. And this is a question for Stephanie. You made a compelling case for the importance of community broadly defined or social capital for young African-American students growing up in Baltimore and their success. Do you think, have you thought about the possibility of creating a similar sense of community through school choice in charter schools, for example, where students of color would be at the school voluntarily? You would have a community of parents who, together, select a given school for their children. That's not a rhetorical question. It's one that I grapple with myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I do think, you know, when I speak as a parent, I think it's important that families have choices, that families have options. One size does not fit all. People choose schools for a variety of reasons when they have means. And I think that those who don't have means should be given, as much as we can, access to some of those choices, I think. In any other, if it were not school, if it were not the education system in this country, we would all be supporting that. But there are political ramifications for pulling or feeling or expressing yourself in such a way as it seems like you're pulling children out of public school. Again, that's a conversation about the adults and what the adults need, and not about what the teachers need. So just as my parents were able to pull together dollars to move me 30 minutes out, and by the way, that would have been a school that I would have been, could have been bused to if forced busing had been in my future, and would have moved from a school, again, where I was one of, well, there was one white girl in our class of 15 or 16, to a situation where I was one of two African-Americans. I don't know which situation is better. I don't think that either is particularly ideal. But the fact is, we were able to make that choice.
Anyone in the middle or the end? We have a question in the back. A microphone's coming to you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Quentin Liggins, and I'm the Associate Director for Leading Educators here in Washington, DC. And I would love to hear your thoughts, everyone on the panel, about the ability that your family actually has access to opt-out, and if Brown v. Board of Education has only given a new pathway for those who have resources and who can opt-out, to opt-out, but the entrenched poverty that remains for those who do not have it, remains? And if there's a policy or legislative way to help those who do not have the ability to access higher education?
Feel free.
If I might, years ago, I was schooled by a mom. In Indianapolis, the very first privately-funded scholarship-granting organization was formed. And part of the deal with the scholarship was that this was for the poorest of the poor in the inner city of Indianapolis. But the parents had to supply half of the tuition. So at the time, the going tuition rate for most private schools in the inner city, and they were very diverse schools, was about $1,600. So the parents had to come up with the extra $800. Well, at first, the concern was, oh, well, nobody's going to do that. You know, if they don't have the $800 to do this, this isn't going to work. Well, lo and behold, yet it worked. And in fact, the overwhelming majority of scholarships were given to children where the household income was considerably under $8,000 a year. The poorest of the poor, who we might think, oh, they couldn't possibly come up with $800 to do this, this won't work. Yeah, it worked. It worked really well. And one of those moms taught me why it worked so well. When I challenged her, "Okay, so how did you do this? You were homeless. You dropped out of school in the eighth grade. You don't have an education. You've never worked. So where does the money come from? How does it happen?" And she very impolitely told me that I would never in my life understand the value of education. The reason for that is because she had none, and I had a great education. So she was right. I will never understand what that's like, to live through life with no education. I will never understand that. But the thing that she understood is that her child was the most valuable thing in her life, and she would not allow anything to stand in the way of seeing her child have an opportunity in life that she could never access, that she could only dream of. So anytime we talk about people not being able to access education, I can give you story after story after story of those people that we think wouldn't be able to, and they're able to. And they activate, again, those parental instincts to do what's right for their own kids.
So let me do this. The gentleman in the back, and then we'll work our way toward the middle, all the way in the back with his hand in the air.
Good morning. My name is Abdul Kareem Mewing Boyd. I'm an administrator here at Elsie Whitlow Stokes Community Freedom Public Charter School. And I'm also a member of the Bayo Bailey Sullivan Leadership Institute Fellowship. I have two slightly related questions. One is, with reference to educational savings accounts, especially for use by homeschooling parents, I am myself a parent of a homeschooler. What kind of response could, would you suggest to challenges to ESAs around, you know, this would be a grant that is only available for people with children, people who do not have children but also pay into the tax base? Do they have access to educational savings accounts for themselves, for their own benefit? But then, secondly, I'd like to know your thoughts about how this relates to the historical disadvantage to black and brown children and conversations about reparations writ large in this country.
So whoever wants to answer, if you could do so within about a minute, because I want to make sure we end on time, so I'll open it up to anyone on the panel.
So I, with respect to the first part of your question, I don't think there's any issue, but we need to increasingly recognize that we all have to invest in education of children, whether or not we have our own children. It's a problem when we start to see this as, "Am I getting mine?" as opposed to recognizing, we all benefit when we have a more educated populace, more educated workforce. Even though I have no children of my own, my retirement depends upon our success collectively in ensuring that we get better outcomes from education, more equitable outcomes. And with respect to the remaining part of your question, I think that, I want to say again, education is complicated. There are multiple solutions, no single solution, and they are evolving solutions. This is in part why I think the abdication of a federal role is so tragic in this particular context. Going back to the question, Stephanie answered, I'm a big fan of OCR, big fan of OCR under whatever administration. However, it's always under-resourced and not able to really go out and identify and tackle the serious problems across the country. And I contrast OCR's availability in education as the primary vehicle of federal involvement in equal educational opportunity to what we've done in civil rights in every other context. We have much more aggressive laws that allow those who are victims of discrimination, those who experience discrimination, to go into court and seek remedies in every other context, whether it's voting, or housing, or employment. And that's an irony, because civil rights era started with Brown versus Board of Education and a recognition by the Supreme Court of how important education is. And yet, in the aftermath, this is the one area where we are least aggressive, least assertive about ensuring at a national level that there is equal educational opportunity.
It is now 10:20. I know there are more questions from the audience. The great thing, a number of our panelists will remain, so feel free to speak with them at the conclusion of this. As you heard, lawyers play a big role today in education as they did 60 years ago with Brown v. Board of Education, too. We know that education is something that's important to all of us, but this is only a start of the dialogue. As I started earlier, every generation needs to reflect on what America was like 60 years ago, fast forward to 2015, and to look 60 years ahead. Please give everyone up here an applause, and again, thank you for coming to the session. We will return and start Panel Two at 10:30. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to begin our second panel. For those of you who are joining us for the first time, welcome to the American Enterprise Institute. We are here to talk about Brown v. Board of Education II at 60. We have moved from Panel One, which focused on the courts and schools, and now we're going to talk about demography and schools. In 1955, the majority of students who were in American public schools were white. There were also African-American students, Hispanics, Asians, Native Americans, and others who were in the state. You fast-forward to 2014 and the start of the 2014-15 school year. It was important because it's the first time in American history where the majority of K-12 students in the United States, and it's 50 million, were non-white. If you take a look at trends, you're going to see the public school system trend with still white students, but the number moving south, the number moving north for Hispanic students, somewhat north for African-American students, and sometimes flat for other groups. As we talk about Brown 60 years later, and we talk about integration and desegregation, we have to look at the fact that we have people, for a lot of reasons, who move in and out of neighborhoods, who move in and out of schools. And what will that mean to American education? So, I've put together a second panel of four experts who will talk to us about what demography looks like in schools today, also what it looks like for neighborhoods and different approaches that we can take. I'm going to introduce everyone in the order they will speak. First person is Richard Callenberg with the Next Century Foundation. He's a senior fellow there. He is considered the godfather of the idea of economic integration in schools. He's a prolific scholar and someone who's been honest for a number of years about the role of class in the discussion, as well as race. I'm sure he's going to provide you some very good ideas of how to reform schools, and he's been involved with this subject. He's also, since we mentioned charters and vouchers in a previous panel, he's also an area expert in that subject or those subjects as well. We then have Dr. Ben Scaffady, who is a professor of economics at Kennesaw State in Georgia. He's also the director of the Education Economics Center at Kennesaw State. He has been involved in government in a number of ways. He was a staff member in charge of education policy for a former Georgia governor. He was also the chair of the Georgia Charter School Commission, where he had an opportunity to commission charter schools statewide. He's written a great deal on areas of choice, but also of integration, and particularly looking at large metropolitan areas. How do we look at integration in cities that are changing, not core cities, where we often have a number of people identified, but in large metropolitan areas? He has also worked in, at the local level with education, and he's got a publication that's on the front table for many of you who want to take a look at it. Next, we have Professor Bartley Danielson, who is a professor of finance and real estate at North Carolina State. He is an expert in the area of finance, but also in the area of education and renewal. We had a chance to sit on the panel not too long ago at the Cato Institute, and he had a very interesting approach to the role that schools play in changing communities. And in particular, he's the founder of, and president of Environmentalist for Education Reform. It's a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting research and awareness to the importance of school choice to revitalizing communities. And so, he will have a very important thing to say about demography in schools. And lastly, we have Erica Bryant, who is the executive director of the E.W. Stokes Charter School here in Washington, DC. It is over 17 years old, one of the first charter schools in the city. That's important to mention because in this city, we've seen a number of charter schools come and go, and we know that DC has one of the largest concentrations of charter schools per capita in the nation. What's unique about her school is that while DC public, DC public school demography is about 82% African-American within the charter school sector, it's about 62%. It's less than 50% in her school. She's made a push for zip code diversity, language diversity, where they teach English, Spanish, English, and French. And a number of people in the city want to go to her school. So, she can talk to us about the role that her school is playing in dealing with demographic changes in the city, but also making educational achievement a first priority. So, with that, I will turn it over to Richard, and then we will work our way to the end, and then we will have a moderated Q and A with the moderator afterwards. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Gerard.
There we go. Thank you, Gerard, and congratulations on your new position here at the American Enterprise Institute. I'm glad you're shaking things up. I, you know, if someone had said at the beginning of the year that Donald Trump would be leading the Republicans, and that the American Enterprise Institute was taking on school integration as a central issue, I would have told them they were crazy. But this is a, this is a welcome development here, and an exciting one, because I think there is no issue in education that is more central to this, to the future of our children than whether, in fact, we can have separate schooling for black and white, and Latino, and separate schooling for rich and poor, and really think that we're providing genuinely equal education. So, I'm so glad to be part of this discussion. So, in thinking about the demographic changes, I'm sure we'll get into the fact that in Brown versus Board of Education, the issues were largely black and white, and today, we have a growing Latino population that is incredibly important to our discussions of this issue. But the question that I want to raise is also the growing class divide that we see in our country. At the time of Brown versus Board of Education, according to Sean Riordan, who's a professor at Stanford, the test score gap between African-American and white students was twice as large as the gap, test score gap, between rich and poor. And according to Riordan, today, precisely the opposite is true. The income gap between high-income and low-income students is today twice as large as the black-white test score gap. Now, I'm a strong proponent of racial integration, and I think that, you know, the existing gaps in test scores between different races and ethnicities is shameful and needs to be addressed. But what I want to introduce into this conversation is an additional element, which is the socioeconomic gap and the need to address that. And so, that's what I'm calling here the New Brown, socioeconomic integration in American education. So, what I mean by that is efforts by school districts to take on the gap, the income gap and achievement, and the gap between where students attend school. And this can happen, there's a lot of overlay with race, but it can happen absent of racial differences as well. The first school district to look at economic integration was La Crosse, Wisconsin, which is a small town that's overwhelmingly white. But there was a divide between the blue-collar whites and the white-collar whites. And there was one high school that sent people off to college that had AP classes and all sorts, all the best teachers, and another high school that really emphasized technical education, didn't offer a very challenging curriculum, had weaker teachers. And so, the district sought to bring students of different economic backgrounds together in that instance, and had a lot of success in raising student achievement. Given the strong relationship between race and class in this country, one of the great things about an economic integration program is that it will also bring a lot of racial integration. So, why are people talking about socioeconomic integration, school integration today, 60 years after Brown versus Board of Education and the Brown II decision? Well, the first is a matter of law. In 2007, the US Supreme Court constrained the ability of school districts to use race in student assignment. And so, in cases involving Louisville and Seattle, the Supreme Court said that looking at an individual student's race and deciding where he or she could go to school was problematic under the Constitution. By contrast, it's perfectly legal to consider the economic status of a family in looking at where students will attend school. And so, a number of school districts have shifted the basis of their integration programs to look at things like whether students are eligible for free and reduced-price lunch as opposed to skin color, per se. The second reason we're seeing more focus on socioeconomic integration is that the social science research, going back 50 years, has always suggested that there was not a problem, per se, in terms of academics, of having a school that was predominantly black or predominantly Latino. It's always been that having concentrations of poverty tends to cause problems in education, and that one of the best things you can do for a low-income student of whatever race is to give her a chance to go to an economically-integrated school. And the final point here is, as I mentioned, is that one of the nice side benefits of a socioeconomic integration program is that it will bring a lot of racial integration as well, which I think is good for reasons apart from test score results, that if we want a society where we develop a citizenry that is embracing of diversity and celebrating it, then we want our schools to be racially-integrated as well. So, if you go back a half-century, there is strong research to suggest that socioeconomic integration will benefit students. So, going back to kind of the granddaddy of social science research studies, the Coleman Report, found that the biggest predictor of academic achievement was the socioeconomic status of the family that a student comes from. But the second biggest predictor was the socioeconomic status of the classmates. So, whether you went to a rich school or a poor school. And if you look internationally, we find that the schools that are among the most successful, like Finland's, are those not only where there are lower poverty rates, but also where they have low levels of economic segregation. So, if you're poor in Finland, you're likely to still go to a middle-class public school. I'm getting the signal that my time is running out, and so, I'm going to flip through some of these next ones pretty quickly. We find that low-income students on the National Assessment for Educational Progress, who go to middle-class schools, are as much as two years ahead of low-income students stuck in high-poverty schools. And there's research from, powerful research, using random assignment of students in Montgomery County, Maryland, right outside of Washington, DC here, that suggests that what's more powerful than providing extra funds in a high-poverty school is to be able to go to an economically-integrated school. So, those individuals who were able to live in middle-class neighborhoods through public housing opportunities and attend middle-class schools, those in the green zone, did far better than those who went to higher-poverty schools that spent a lot of extra money, $2,000 extra per pupil, for reduced class size and some of the benefits, some of the things that we would like to see in our schools. But integration, economic integration, was a more powerful lever. So, why does it matter whether you're in an integrated school or a high-poverty school? Three reasons. The first has to do with classmates. We know that peers are influencing one another all the time, and it's an advantage to be in a middle-class school rather than a high-poverty school, on average, because there are lower levels of disorder in the classroom, lower levels of student mobility, so you have a more consistent population. Poor children move a lot more than middle-class children, and that can be disruptive in a high-poverty school. And middle-class children bring bigger vocabularies to the school, and so, one of the best ways to expand one's own vocabulary is to be around students who know a lot of, a lot of new words that you can pick up. Second piece of the parents, and we know that having an active parent community in a school is, has a powerful prediction on academic achievement for all the students in a school. And middle-class parents are just in a position, on average, to be more involved in school affairs. They're less, they're not just trying to get by, and they're not working three jobs necessarily, but they, and so, they can volunteer in the class, four times as likely to be members of a PTA, twice as likely to volunteer in class and the like. Finally, teachers in middle-class schools, on average, are stronger and more qualified, more experienced than those in high-poverty schools. What about the effect on middle-class children? Well, the research suggests that middle-class children will do fine in economically-integrated schools so long as we don't go into a place where there are concentrations of poverty, you know, more than 50% of the students being low-income. And of course, there are tremendous benefits to socioeconomic integration in terms of the moral development of middle-class children who will benefit from diversity. So, there are now 80 school districts that are pursuing the socioeconomic integration programs. My colleague Kimberly Quick is here, and she's going to come out with a report in the near future, shows that that number is growing. They do so through choice and efforts to ensure that there are incentives for middle-class families to engage in integration. There are a variety of school districts, from Cambridge to Chicago to New York State, as well as a number of charter schools. And the point I'll end on is that we find some hope in this area, because our new Secretary of Education, John King, has expressed strong support for socioeconomic integration. In New York State, one of his last moves as Education Commissioner was to set up a pilot program to turn around failing schools by trying to bring a more diverse, economically-diverse student body into the school. And we've seen, and I've got lots of evidence that you won't be able to see because I'm running out of time, but that in places like Cambridge, Massachusetts, where they pursued socioeconomic integration, you see high graduation rates, good academic achievement for students. And so, to my mind, that's, when we think about the demographic changes in this country and what we need to do today, it seems to me we need to reinvent the spirit of Brown, which said, "Separate is unequal," and apply that to our nation's growing economic divide.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Rick. I'd like to thank Gerard for having me here, and I agree with Rick that it's a blessing that AEI has some of the caliber of Gerard Robinson. And I'd also like to blame him for my kids, Anna-Mae, Claire, and Jack. He's the reason I wasn't home last night. So, that's important. I agree with Rick on that as well. I'm here to talk about the integration anomaly. But first, let me say, God bless the Brown versus Board of Education, God bless the plaintiffs, God bless their parents, God bless Thurgood Marshall and the NAACP and everyone that made that happen. Government should not be allowed to forcibly segregate people by race. I think Gerard wanted me to talk about two things. One is, it's been mentioned so far, but what are the trends currently with segregation in schools and in neighborhoods in the last few decades? And second, what do we make of it? So, first, let me talk about what's going on with racial sorting since Brown in terms of American neighborhoods. Since 1970, if you look at the segregation of African-Americans from everybody else, there's been a significant improvement in racial integration in American neighborhoods within metropolitan areas. Each decade, there's been an improvement in integration. Each decade, improvement has been small, but collectively, it's been quite large, from 1970 to 2010. What's going on with racial sorting since Brown socially? Well, over the past 30 years, the percentage of marriages that are interracial has doubled to now 15% of all marriages are interracial. Second is 40% of child adoptions are interracial. And third, in the 1950s, if you look at various polling data, only about 37% of Americans, white, black, other, only 37% of Americans said they were willing to vote for an African-American for president. Now, it's north of 95% of Americans said they're willing to vote for African-American for president. What's going on with racial sorting with respect to public schools? As we heard in the previous panel, it was long after Brown As we heard in the previous panel, it was long after Brown before public schools started integrating by race. If you look at the late 1960s to the early 1980s, there was a dramatic increase in racial integration in American public schools. However, at the same time, there was a big white flight from urban school districts to suburban school districts. Now, there's a debate in the literature about how much of this white flight was caused by school integration, but the best research, and the most recent research, shows that a big chunk of white flight was directly due to the integration of public schools, but not the majority of that white flight. White flight to private schools, we talk about it a lot, was actually pretty small potatoes compared to white flight to suburban public school districts. So what happened after 1980? Well, we saw on the previous slide, after 1980, American neighborhoods continued to become more racially-integrated. But public schools saw a different trend. From 1980 or so to about the year 2000, public schools in this country became more racially-segregated, even though American neighborhoods were becoming more racially-integrated. Since 2000, the trend has been uneven. While neighborhoods continue to become more racially-integrated, in some places, public schools became more integrated, in some schools, they became more segregated. But public school integration tended to lag neighborhood racial integration. There's also some research from the state of North Carolina. In their public schools, there's a lot of racial sorting within public schools, and I think more research needs to be done on that as well. What's going on with respect to racial, sorry, to income sorting, to get at Rick's point? And Rick, I know, has seen this data as well. Since 1970, there's been a huge increase in the sorting by income across American neighborhoods. Between 1970 and 2009, the percent of Americans living in a neighborhood where the average income is 150% of the median income or higher, that percent of Americans living in these affluent neighborhoods has doubled from 7% to 14%. Over that 40-year period, the percent of Americans living in low-income neighborhoods, where the median income in that neighborhood is less than 67% of the metropolitan median, has doubled from 8% to 17%. And the percent of Americans living in middle-class neighborhoods has fallen. So there's been a tremendous increase in the sorting by income across American neighborhoods since 1970. All right? So what do we make of all this? I'm gonna ask an important question, and I'm gonna ask it two different ways. Number one, will the sorting of students between and within schools be smaller under the traditional public education system or under a system of parental choice? And there could be many systems of parental choice. Second, when Americans are making free choices in other walks of life, they are choosing greater racial and ethnic integration. We're still not completely there, but people are, the trend lines are moving in the right direction. Would this hold true if parents had greater freedom over where to send their children to school? As Gerard mentioned, I wrote a new study that came out last week by the Friedman Foundation called "The Integration Anomaly," comparing the effects of K-12 education delivery models on segregation in schools. And it's where I document the trends I just talked about, and I also talk about what do we make of these trends. All right? My read of the logic and evidence suggests well-designed parental choice opportunities will lead to more integration by race and class relative to the traditional public school system. Existing U.S. voucher programs are leading to more integration by race. International evidence on school choice is mixed, but we can learn from their mistakes. We can also learn from logic combined with evidence. The traditional public school system is becoming more homogeneous in terms of offerings. Spending is becoming equalized, common core, common curriculum, common testing, what have you. So how are parents gonna choose schools, for example, if all public schools were the same? As Rick just talked about, the quality and the achievement of your peers in class affects your achievement, right? So if parents can only choose based on the achievement of their peers, that's how they're gonna sort. I'm an economist, so I like to think about models and logic. You can think of six ways that public and private schools may compete under a choice system. One, they might compete by using resources more efficiently. Two, they might locate, schools might locate in areas with low-performing schools. Three, they might offer specialized programs targeted to certain student populations. Four, they might offer programs targeted to pernicious groups. Five, they might cream-skin the best students to attract the best teachers. And six, wealthy donors might create altruistic schools to promote income mixing or racial mixing, or great schools in low-achieving areas. School-choice programs should be designed to promote these beneficial channels of competition, 1, 2, 3, and 6, because logically, that necessarily decreases the negative channels of competition under 4 and 5. So any school-choice program that denies 1, 2, 3, or 6 will lead to more 4 and 5, just logically. If you prevent schools from competing on certain margins, that means they're gonna compete on other margins, right? Integration is important, but so are other outcomes. We're in Washington, D.C. I wanna quote a study that was federally funded by my friend Patrick Wolf, right? This was of the D.C. voucher program. In D.C., you know, his study was published in 2010. At that time, all D.C. public school students graduated at 59% rate. Of students who applied for a D.C. voucher but were randomly denied, they graduated at a 70% rate from high school. Students who won the lottery and got a voucher but for whatever reason decided not to use it, they graduated high school at 82% rate. Kids who won the lottery and were able to choose a private school, they graduated 91%. Right? What's interesting is, at the time of this study, the D.C. vouchers were 7,500 per student, which was between a half and a third of what the taxpayers were also spending on D.C. public schools. So not only does racial integration matter and economic integration matter, but achievement matters as well. So what I wanna do is, what can we do to design school-choice programs to promote integration and achievement? And I call these the school-choice dues. First, universal scholarships. Give higher-middle-income families an incentive to live close to where they work in communities that are currently low-income. Second, progressive scholarships. Give bigger scholarships to kids with special needs and with low income to give them a wider array of schools to choose from and to give schools an incentive to enroll them. Third, external accreditation for all schools. My free-market friends in the audience are about to throw up. Right, accreditation has a lot of negative things with input-based policies, I get it. But, we might need a way to prevent pernicious schools from coming in, because I think in states, if one bad school comes in, it could destroy the entire school-choice program. Next, aid parents in choosing, things like gradeschools.org. School districts that have public school-choice programs, I applaud them. They tend to do a terrible job of making parents aware of their options and helping them choose. Next, centralized, these are school-choice don'ts. These are program don'ts. Centralized accountability via standardized testing. There's some case-study evidence that parents of means avoid schools with low-average test scores. And so if you're grading schools by test scores, that's gonna cause more socioeconomic segregation. Public schools through zoning and private schools through admissions will screen out low-achieving students if those schools are graded based on test scores and achievement. Requirements on schools of choice don't do it. If schools are largely the same based on inputs, how are parents gonna choose? They're gonna choose based on peers. Don't mandate equality. It sounds good, but it's gonna let parents, or give parents an incentive to sort in high-income communities. Finally, controlled choice and mechanism design, I applaud public school choice, but I think it doesn't go far enough. Just quick conclusions. If we continue with the traditional public education system, we will likely see continued increases in sorting by income. Changes in sorting by race will depend on if income differences between blacks and whites narrow or get bigger, right? And finally, there'll be significant sorting within public schools, that will remain. Practically speaking, affirmative efforts to integrate public schools within and across districts, I think, are doomed. Why? Income segregation is increasing a lot. A large majority of racial segregation is between districts, not within districts. And public school districts have become geographically larger over time because of consolidations. So just busing kids across district lines is harder to do than it was a generation ago. I think it's time to give universal school choice a try and monitor the results on achievement, but also on sorting by race and class. Thank you.
I'm Bart Daniels, and I'm a business professor at North Carolina State University. Time is short, so let's dive right in. There are a lot of empty school buildings in large cities around the country. This one's from Kansas City, Missouri. The reason they're empty in Kansas in the mid-1960s, there were 77,000 children in the Kansas City school system. This year, they're under 17,000. What happened to the other 60,000 kids? All right? Well, let's look at some data. Around the United States, there are about the same number of 5- to 9-year-olds as 0- to 4-year-olds, right? They're five-year cohorts. It's not true in Kansas City. Kansas City has 15% fewer 5- to 9-year-olds. And less than 10 miles away in Overland Park, Kansas, there are 36% more 5- to 9-year-olds than 0- to 4-year-olds. So, when families have a child that's approaching age 5, they leave Kansas City, they head for the suburbs. If they move to the Kansas City area, they won't move into the city. They move into the suburbs instead. This is a phenomenon that we refer to as "voting with your feet." All right? How does that work? Well, politicians draw lines on the grounds, called "school districts," and then people choose their schools by choosing which side of that line to live on. The result is spatial sorting. What we mean by that is that in areas with, across those lines, school qualities will differ, but not just school quality. You also have income levels that differ across the lines and property values. So the areas with good schools have high incomes and they have high property values; the areas with bad schools have the opposite. This is bad for poor people. We got rid of the poll tax shortly after Brown, right? You don't have to pay to vote in elections. You still have to pay to vote with your feet. And if you can't afford to vote with your feet, you get stuck on the side of the line with other people who can't afford to vote. So who gets the worst schools? Well, poor people. But it isn't just the poor people, and this is really important to understand. Anyone who lives around them gets those schools. So a middle-class family that cares about education, as their child approaches 5 years old, they have no choice but literally to leave the poor behind. This is bad for the poor. Creates economic segregation. There's a rich part of town, and there's a poor part of town. Okay? But it's worse because of something called a spatial mismatch, which is, poor people want jobs, but the jobs aren't being created in the area where they live. They're not being created in those spaces. They're being created where middle-class people and wealthy people live and spend their money. If you can't find a job, all right, or a good one, that reduces social mobility, poor people can't work their way into the middle class, many people don't even know anybody in the middle class in these areas. And over generations, it leads to increasing inequality. Right? It's worse because people don't vote with their feet. They vote with their cars. They're able to vote over much longer distances than you could have ever imagined back in the 1950s. That leads to greater suburban sprawl and also more concentrated urban blight. You have more traffic on the roads, right? How do you accommodate the traffic? Well, you build more roads. Result is more air pollution, greater CO2 emissions. That's the environmental angle right there. Now, I don't wanna pick on Kansas City, all right? They can take it right now. They won a championship, I guess. I don't wanna pick on them, you know, they're not the worst. I call this percentage the "family flight" rate, all right? Don't pick on them, they're not the worst in the country, they're not even the worst in Missouri. Okay? This problem exists in every major metropolitan area in the United States today. Some people look at this and are surprised that Atlanta, there, minus 15%, the school district there. Well, if you look at what's really going on in Atlanta, what you'll see, this is a map of population changes in the Atlanta area, right? The brown area between the last two censuses lost population, lost more than 5% of its population. The purple areas on the periphery gained significant population as well as a lot of traffic. It really shocks a lot of people to know that in 1966, the Braves moved to Atlanta, there are fewer people living in the city of Atlanta today, in the actual city, than lived there in 1966. The Braves play at that little black dot there at the, in the, just south of downtown. If you wanna see the Braves play in Atlanta, you've gotta go soon, because in 2017, they're moving out. They're moving out to the suburbs, they said, "That's where our fans are." When a city loses the middle class, it begins to lose the businesses that depend upon the middle class. And there are a lot of people that work around that stadium on game day, but they're gonna be spatially mismatched from their jobs two years from now. Here's the thing, it doesn't have to be like this, all right? There are other models. Consider Vermont. Vermont has something referred to as a "tuitioning system." There are 200 school districts in Vermont, 93 of them don't have a public school. Now, what do you do if you don't have a public school? Well, children in those districts, parents can send their kids to school wherever they want, to a public school in a different district, or to a private school within the district or outside the district. In fact, along the northern border, there have been children that have gone to school in Canada on Vermont tuitioning. I'm a real estate researcher. I was interested in, well, what effect does this have on property values? Well, we already know that people that are assigned to better schools live in areas with higher property values. But what about people who don't have a school at all, who have no assigned school at all? Well, that's that House C there. Turns out that property values, home values, in areas without an assigned school are higher than they are in places with assigned schools. If you compare it to School C to School B, or Home C to Home B there, what you'll discover is that the difference is almost, is $24,000, about $24,000, because, and this is a place without a school, because you get to pick your own school. That's published in the Journal of Housing Research. Somebody sent me this from a newspaper there in Vermont recently. It turns out East Haven was a small school district that closed their school three years ago, four years ago. And now, they're noting in the local news, "East Haven, school choice leads to real estate boom, growing pains." Turns out, they discovered, hey, a lot of people with 5-year-olds are moving into our community, and the real estate people attribute it to choice. It's completely consistent with the research. There's other research in, primarily in European countries, but in some other localities here, that basically finds the same thing. Poor areas revitalize with these sorts of programs. There aren't a lot of places that have tuitioning systems, but there are a lot of schools in this country that operate, in a sense, outside the lines, that operate without lines, charter schools and private schools. We have a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts to study a charter school in Santa Ana, California. It moved there several years ago when a more affluent area decided they really didn't want them, they were bringing in kids from outside the area, and it was causing traffic problems, or at least that was the allegation, it might create traffic problems. So the mayor of Santa Ana attracted them to downtown Santa Ana because there was a lot of empty real estate down there, and it was frightening and blighted. So they moved into a bank building on Main Street. It was a really good move, because there was a lot of empty buildings around. Now they're in three old bank buildings and a church, okay? This mayor was very visionary. He didn't stop with one school, he brought in two other charter schools. Today, there are 3,500 kids going to school within two blocks of Main Street that used to be blighted. And if you go there today, it's not blighted at all. And the reason you know it's not blighted is because of that empty lot right there, coming back to the real estate side, because a developer purchased that property in order to build that, which would be the tallest building in all of Orange County. Now, the mayor noted, you know, the crime rate dropped a lot down here around these schools. It turns out that's been studied before, in Charlotte, North Carolina, where people were randomly assigned, where they applied for a school-choice program and not everyone could get in. And so, they compared, a researcher at Harvard compared crime rates for the kids that got in versus those that didn't, and what he discovered was, the ones who got what they asked for committed fewer crimes. The results were concentrated among minority males that committed half as much crime. Nevertheless, I find it really shocking that in an area that the school was afraid to go to early on, because the crime rate was very high, last year Forbes Magazine ranked 90% minority Santa Ana as the fourth-safest city in the country. Something very dramatic changed there. Now, the research we're doing for the NEA is based on research of a charter school that we looked at in North Carolina and how families moved after their children got into the school. The schools at that black dot, and the other dots are all families that moved there, that moved after they got a child in the school. Bounce back to where they started, then where they ended up. The school is a powerfully attractive magnet for those families. Turns out, people care a lot more about their kids' commute than their own. It's probably biologically hardwired, yes? I could show you a lot of other examples, but time is short. So, let's talk about what cities ought to learn, right? Cities should be implementing something I'll refer to as "community protection and revitalization scholarships," right? Protection less crime, revitalization more economic activity. It's a mouthful, let's just call it a CPR scholarship. You don't have to give CPR to everybody, you just You just give it to people who are dying. And you don't have to give it everywhere, just to places that are dying. And those places are places with concentrated poverty, where people are moving out when their children get to be five years old. In those places, everyone should get Vermont-style tuitioning, or some variation on that. You give it to the poor for social justice reasons. They are burdened with bad schools. You give it to the middle class because the poor need the middle class to be willing to live around them. They're the ones who bring economic activity and social stability. What would CPR scholarships do? Well, there is a long laundry list. And since time is short, I was going to talk about the red ones. We'll just talk about the top one, improve the local economy. Let me spell out what that means. J-O-B-S, jobs. And I don't mean jobs 12 years from now. I mean, I mean jobs next year when some family with a four-year-old decides to stay, all right, immediately. It begins to bring jobs. There are a lot of other benefits as well. So let me summarize real quickly. Politicians draw lines on the ground. They divide people. People vote with their feet. Leads to economic segregation and concentrated poverty. Okay? Notice the direction of causality here. Now, a lot of people know that there's a problem, and they wring their hands and they say, "We've got to do something about these failing schools. We need to equalize funding, all right, across the lines. We need to adopt common core so that the standards are equal across the lines." This idea of separate but equal must be very, very enticing. Because people who will call for greater equality will ignore the monopoly system that uses those lines on the ground to separate people. That's the purpose of the lines, is for administrative convenience of putting people in the schools that administrators want them in. Okay? Separate but equal will never be equal. Give parents opportunities to select schools without regard to boundaries. Let them erase those lines on the ground that limit their choices, and these other problems will begin to fade away on their own. Bart Danielson, North Carolina State University, environmentalist for Effective Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerard. Is this on? It's on, okay. Thank you for inviting me to take part in this conversation. Again, my name is Erica Bryant, and I am from the Elsie Whitlow Stokes Community Freedom Public Charter School here in Washington, DC. We are a dual-language immersion school located near the Catholic University area. As Gerard mentioned earlier, we're one of the oldest charter schools in Washington, DC. We are celebrating our 18th year now. The school was founded by Linda Moore, who started the school in honor of her mother, Elsie Whitlow Stokes, who was an elementary school teacher in Arkansas for 36 years. Elsie Whitlow Stokes had three basic principles about education that helped her develop over 1,000 students in her lifetime. And those principles were that every student can succeed academically and become a responsible citizen. Every student needs a solid foundation in reading, mathematics, social studies, science in the arts, and that every student can contribute to the community through community service. So Elsie Whitlow Stokes' educational principles were integrated into the mission of the school, which is to prepare 350 culturally diverse preschool and elementary school students in the District of Columbia to be leaders, scholars, and responsible citizens who are committed to social justice. We teach children to think, speak, read, write, and learn in two languages, either English and Spanish or English and French. With a dual focus on academic excellence and community service, the Stokes School accomplishes its mission by creating an environment of achievement, respect, and nonviolence. So way back in the beginning, when we started 18 years ago, serving diverse populations of students, that was our mission. It was part of our mission. We wanted a mix of students, racially, ethnically, economically, culturally, and linguistically diverse students. So we're really intentional with our recruitment efforts, both for students and for staff. 18 years ago, nobody really knew what charter schools were in the district, so we had to go out into the areas where we knew diverse populations lived. We looked at churches and at cultural centers and at embassies to recruit. We also wanted our faculty and staff to be reflective of the diversity in the student population. And really what we wound up with was a staff and faculty that could communicate to almost anybody, any student who came into our school, except one we had from Albania. We didn't have anyone who could communicate with him. But initially, almost all of our students were students of color. We had majority black and brown students and very few middle-class students. Initially, we lived in a neighborhood that was, had a high population of Spanish speakers and low-income people. When we moved into our current location eight years ago, which is near Catholic University, we noticed demographic switches, changes in our population. In 2008, our Hispanic population was over 50%. This year, it's dropped down to, we are right around, I can't see that far, 28%. Thank you. Our African-American population has stayed fairly stable since we moved in. Our white population, we've seen steady increases since 2008. This year, we are up to 19% white students, and we've also seen an increase in the students who identify as multiracial. Since we started tracking in 2013, we had 3%. Now we're up to 12% into this year. We've also seen a dramatic drop in our English language learning population. Extremely high population when we started the school, and in 2008, we were over 50%. Now we're down to 17%. We've seen pretty steady numbers in our special education populations. When we moved into our current location, our free and reduced, students who were eligible for free and reduced lunch, they were in the 80 percentile. Now we are down to 52% in 2015. Also, students for, students who qualify for TANF or SNAP, we've seen steady decreases in those numbers as well. If you compare our school, as Gerard alluded to earlier, if you compare the demographics to ours, between our school and the District of Columbia in general, you'll see some pretty stark differences. We have lower numbers of African-American students, higher numbers of Hispanic students, higher numbers of white students, and mixed-race students. Also, looking at our special populations and economic indicators, currently, we have fewer special ed students in the District of Columbia. We have significantly more ELL students than the district at large. We have fewer economically disadvantaged students and fewer students who qualify for TANF or SNAP. So the strategies that we've used for improving student outcomes, we've always wanted to provide the best education possible for our students. We weren't concerned with crafting programs, especially for poor students or students of color. Our goal was to be the best school for poor, our goal was not to be the best school for poor students or students of color. Our goal was to be the best school for any student. So in order to do this, we researched best practices and took time in the development of our school to examine other effective schools. We asked ourselves questions like, "In the 21st century, what do students need to know and be able to do?" Thus, our language immersion program. If we want to raise global citizens, they need to be able to communicate outside this country, so our students are learning French and Spanish. What values should students have? Every morning, when we have lineup in our school, our students repeat our three-school rules. The entire staff repeats it. And those rules are, "I will take care of myself, I will take care of others, and I will take care of my community." Respect is very big in our school. So all of these things were incorporated into our school program. Other strategies that we have used to improve student outcomes include, we've already talked about hiring diverse faculty and staff. So not only racially, culturally, linguistically, but we make a real effort to have a balance between male and female staff and faculty, because we believe that every child in the student needs to have someone that they can look up to and to relate to. We have also provided quality professional development for our teachers. Teachers don't necessarily come straight out of teachers' college knowing how to teach, particularly in any individual school climate. They need to be taught how to do that. We've aligned research-based curriculum and instruction with standards. We create multiple opportunities for family engagement. And it's not just families who participate in PTA. Our families serve on our Board of Trustees. They volunteer to give tours in our school. But the converse is true as well. Our staff is involved with our families, from our maintenance crew to our food service crew, to our teachers and administrators. Everyone is responsible for reaching out and becoming involved with our families, to the point that we do home visits at our school. Additionally, providing student support is important. We have students from diverse backgrounds. We have students who perhaps need meals. When we have vacations, Christmas vacations, we provide meals to students. We provide all kinds of student support to help improve outcomes. So we believe that we have, we are preparing our students for secondary school and college and careers. We're giving them strong foundations. And this is evidenced by the fact, this is just one indicator, but if we look at our DC CAS, which is our standardized testing measure before the park, but if we look at our DC CAS for the last few years, we consistently score higher in both math and reading than students in DC in general. So in conclusion, if we are going to have diverse schools, it must be intentional. Systems are currently still set up that despite Brown versus Board, there's little diversity in public schools. If we look at DC, for example, the economics associated with housing, if we look at the most affluent neighborhoods in the district, we have 80% white students in a city that's only 35% white. School leadership must also understand that diversity is a goal, whether it's at the individual school or at the central office level. The choice movement is good, but sometimes it can work to increase separation. So where charters and magnets are very attractive, there tends to be a disproportionate number of white students. And finally, we must institutionalize good strategies in public education for ensuring diversity in schools. Thank you.
We know in 1955 with Brown, too, that at least a third of the people in the US actually lived in what we would call a rural area or non-city space. 2015, a large majority of our population currently lives in cities. Richard alluded to the fact that some of our largest cities in America have seen a decrease in the number of residents, economically and racial. We often talk about white flight, but there's also the dynamic of what I call the Black Exodus, and that's black middle-class families also leaving cities. So that's one dynamic. We have Ben, who happened to mention the idea of school choice, universal school choice in particular, as a way of integrating schools. And there's research to show there's actually more integration in those schools than others. Can that actually work in the public sector? We need to see, and he brings up ways of making that happen. Dr. Danielson mentioned an interesting point about Santa Ana. I'm a Southern California guy. I remember Santa Ana when it probably would have been number four in the country. It says little about Santa Ana, there are great people there. But he's brought up the point of real estate. And when you look at cities, particularly when you're seeing the demographics change, a lot of it is driven by real estate. Those who live there see their property values go up, many of them on fixed incomes. There are challenges, but you also see young families who are moving in, demanding better schools. So he brings up a very good point about real estate. And Erica, in a city, looks very different in 2015 than, of course, 1955 when Brown was one of the five cities. She made an intentional choice. So the question I'm going to open for any one of the panel to answer, given the changes in city dynamics, changes with jobs, lack of jobs, particularly in cities, particularly for African-American men, how can we become intentional to make integration and achievement matter without, at the same time, being too onerous from a government standpoint?
What I was struck by in this conversation is that there seemed to be kind of bipartisan or cross-ideological lines. We were all concerned about this growing problem of concentrated poverty, economic segregation that goes hand-in-hand with racial segregation. But we had a variety of policy options to address that. And, you know, going off your last point, Gerard, I think if we want integrated schools, the policies have to be intentional, that we, and that was your point, too, Erica, that integration won't just happen. We can't just hope that we throw open choice to everyone and that integration will result because most of the evidence here in this country and internationally suggests that in many cases, the opposite will happen. In New Zealand, for example, they threw open school choice to everyone, and people did choose based on peers, and so you found increasing segregation. So what I find encouraging is the districts who say, "Economic integration, racial integration are a priority for us, and we're going to take steps to ensure it." So to give you one example, in Cambridge, Massachusetts, every school is a magnet school. These are not magnet schools you have to test into. They're schools that have themes and different pedagogical approaches. And then parents rank their preferences, one, two, three. But because public education is not just about maximizing parental choice, it's also about the larger social good that comes out of the enterprise. Cambridge has what they call fairness guidelines to ensure that choice is honored in a way that will promote economic integration of the schools. And they've managed to be able to do that pretty well. They place the programs that, through past research, they know will, are most attractive to upper-middle-class families in more disadvantaged neighborhoods, with the idea that people will kind of split their votes. So for some people, the most important thing is to go to a school right nearby. Like whatever the, you know, it could be a Montessori school, it could be an art school, it doesn't matter. They want that proximity. And then for other people, what's most important is the theme or the pedagogical approach at the destination school, and they're willing to travel a little further. And so roughly 90% of families in Cambridge get one of their first couple of choices honored, and the schools, by and large, are pretty economically integrated. And you see in Cambridge that the outcomes are quite good, that black, Hispanic, low-income, and white students are all graduating at higher levels or comparable levels than students in more segregated schools in Massachusetts. So I think it has to be intentional.
I agree with a lot of what Rick said, but we might have different final punchlines. In New Zealand, the school system was highly centralized. Public and private schools had to teach the national curriculum, national tests. And what they made public about each school was what they called deciles. So what was the socioeconomic mix of students in that school? And the reason they did that was so they could shoot more resources to high-need schools. So parents knew, okay, all these public and private schools are basically teaching the same thing, their staff the same way, but I know this school has higher-income people, has fewer minorities, this school has more lower-income people, more minorities, and so parents sorted that way. We've got to learn from that and not do that here. For example, in Chile, they did a program where they gave poor people a 50% bigger voucher than higher-income students, and socioeconomic integration- than higher-income students, and socioeconomic integration improved. So yes, I agree with both Erica and Rick that we need to be intentional about this under any system. And Cambridge, yeah, the evidence is very compelling that student achievement went up, socioeconomic integration went up. But if you look at the Boston metropolitan area, since 2000, racial integration has increased slightly among neighborhoods, but among schools, racial segregation has slightly increased. So a diverging trend. I think working within individual school systems is good, but it's not going to get us there, I think we have to do something bigger. We have to give higher-income and middle-income people an incentive to move back to cities, and giving them a voucher is one way to do it, separating the neighborhood location decision from the school choice decision. Because right now, poor people, public schools, it's not a public school system in this country, it's quasi-public. The price of attending a public school, as Bart said, is can you afford to live in that school zone? Can you afford to live in that school district? We've got to separate that, and I agree with Rick, we got to be intentional about it.
I'll be relatively brief. I don't disagree at all with the idea of being intentional about this. The one point that I would make is, we actually only spend about 3% of our lives in school. 97% of life is spent outside of school. We need to be careful to use methods that don't create segregation in the 97% of life. If we're using, if we're trying to integrate the schools using tools that create segregation outside the schools, and most school districts are very concerned about integration next year or the year after, and these things have long-term effects. It is really difficult to maintain an integrated school system if you're using tools that create a segregated city. Over time, it becomes nearly impossible. So I would just say you need to be careful in that intentionality.
I'll just use the District of Columbia Charter Schools as an example of being intentional. Up until a few years ago, DC's charter schools had individual applications, individual lotteries that schools ran on their own. And this resulted in certain schools being highly attractive to some groups of people, and other schools not so much. So we had possibly three or four schools that almost everyone who was sending their child to a charter school in DC wanted to send their children to. A couple of years ago, DC started a common lottery, common application process that eliminated the ability to manipulate or to whatever it was that people were doing in order to get their kids into certain schools. Now, it's an equal chance for everyone. You enter a common lottery, it's regulated by an outside source, people get the two or three top choices of schools that they can go to, and so there is less opportunity for students and parents to be able to gravitate to, you know, one or two schools.
So language matters a great deal in public policy. It's one reason for charter schools, there's a push to call them public charter schools to incent, to make sure that everyone knows it's public. There's also a push for the term privatization. Often when you hear that term, you think the evils of capitalism and for-profit companies. When you hear the term segregation, for me, the first thing that comes to mind, 1954, 1955, rather than saying we have segregated schools, is it better to say that we have racially identifiable schools?
Well, if you're in polite company, I guess you could say racially identifiable. I mean, I think they're segregated, de facto segregated, to be sure, there's a difference between de facto segregation and, you know, the old style under pre-Brown of de jure segregation. But the effect is the same if we're denying opportunity to students. So I, you know, I'll throw out an even more inflammatory term. I mean, some of our schools have been labeled by the Civil Rights Project at UCLA as apartheid schools, you know? And we've talked about, you know, some positive examples of integrated charter schools, but there are apartheid charter schools, as well as traditional public schools, to be sure. But Orfield's research suggests that the levels of segregation and apartheid schools are even higher among charter schools than traditional public schools.
I think there is a moral difference between de facto and de jure segregation, and we should be more careful with language when we're talking about this, because modern segregation by and large isn't the government forcibly segregating people, it's people choosing where to live, you know, public school districts drawing lines in certain ways, what have you. So we should be more careful with language.
Anyone else? Okay. So what we will do is open the conversation to people in the audience. For those of you who are here for the first time, we have microphones in the back, we have two rules at AEI. Rule number one, give us your name and affiliation. Number two, ask a question and not give a speech. I'm going to go all the way to the back, and I will let...
My name's Patrick Osler, I'm a student at Elizabeth Town College. And my question is, this is open to any of the panel members, do you think that combining Dr. Danielson's CPR program with, for example, a charter school like Dr. Bryant's, and putting one charter school in each state in a bad neighborhood, like a low-income neighborhood, and integrating and creating like a group of integrated students in that school as like a leader for the entire state? Do you guys think that would work? And if so, or if not, why or why not?
I would be suspicious of a program that assigned students to any particular school for any good reason, because those assignments are likely to be undermined by people who don't want the assignment picking up and moving and going somewhere else. You're going to have greater success by fostering schools that middle-class families wish to go to, that they want to go to, and making those available to poor students as well. And certainly charter schools are a lot of really good ones, and I don't want to suggest that CPR scholarships should be in place of charter schools, I would say they ought to be in addition to charter schools. The more choices, the better.
And I agree, I agree with the idea that, you know, we can't simply compel integration. I mean, we tried that in the 1970s, and it didn't work out all that well. But most school districts, you know, these 80s school districts that are integrating by socioeconomic status, do rely on some sort of incentive to draw middle-class families, who are the ones that have the choices, to schools that are economically and racially integrated. And that's been found to be very successful. I mean, in our book on charter schools, we identify 15 smarter charters, we call them, that are economically and racially integrated. I don't know whether I'm allowed to say this at AEI, but they're also unionized, some of them. So, you know, having teacher voice, I think, is an important ingredient to success in schools as well. But we have to, you know, we can do research and find out what is it among upper-middle-class families? What is it that would attract you to a school that's in a tougher neighborhood? And rather than have a bunch of administrators sit around and say, well, let's, you know, let's try an arts magnet, if the research suggests that a Montessori school is what these families are wild about, then make sure that that's the type of charter school or regular public school that's offered, that'll reflect real demand from parents in a community, and will critically be able to also serve low-income students, because the point isn't to create these enclaves of privilege, but rather to have schools that will serve all students.
Erica? No, go ahead, Erica, then we'll turn.
So we did not have middle-income families or upper-middle-income families come to our school until we had about a 10-year proven record of success. Families were only comfortable coming to the school once they realized that we were educating bilingual students, and students were actually graduating from our schools and going to a number of private schools, and eventually getting into very good colleges, that our students were testing well, that we had a safe school community and a good school climate. So it was approximately 10 years into the school that people started to, upper and upper-middle and middle-income families started to gravitate toward us.
Yeah. Dr. Danielson?
Yes, let me just make a comment about the socioeconomic integration, and what I mean by avoiding systems that create longer-term problems. So I don't know about all of them, I know of the ones in my hometown in Raleigh, North Carolina. So we have a magnet school program, and the magnet schools tend to be in low-income areas, and the goal is to bring high-achieving families into the magnet schools in those low-income areas in order to integrate the schools. Now, the way that is accomplished is that people who live in what are quote "high-achieving" neighborhoods, which are only one-third of the area, get priority at the magnet school. So if you are not in a high-achieving area, you don't get priority. So, and it turns out, high-achieving is, you know, nearly synonymous with wealthy. So if a wealthy person makes the mistake of moving out of their neighborhood and into a lower-income or just an average-income neighborhood, they lose their priority in the magnet school. So the way they've implemented that particular program is intended to integrate the schools right now, but it reinforces the importance of those lines, because if you get outside the lines, you don't get to participate as a wealthy person.
Okay. There's a question here in the middle.
Good morning. My name is Omar Wali Crinshaw, Gilson Centering Development Group. This question is for Bartley, or Mr. Danielson. Funny little question. Do capital dollars follow achievements? Are capital dollars used to pacify the poor so they stay in their neighborhoods?
You know, I always hate to admit this, you've gotten beyond my area of expertise. My family claims that I'll never admit that, but this is an instance, I'll have to turn to somebody else to address that.
Well, we have a follow-up dialogue with you to a different point. Question in the corner.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this great presentation. I really appreciate being in a room with so many intelligent and thoughtful people who have devoted their lives to try to bring humanity together in some significant way. And I know you guys are all doing that in your own way. But I have a question, and I've had this question in my mind since I was 10 years old, and I'm clearly a middle-aged man right now, but I still don't understand one little thing, and maybe you can give me an answer to this. When you refer to black or quote-unquote African-Americans, too often it seems to be we're lumped into low achievement. I went to a predominantly white school, I'm a middle-aged man, I'm an achiever, I'm not white, okay? But my question is, can we think of more examples nowadays of quote-unquote African-Americans who are upper-middle-class that we can give as examples, that have achieved great things in our lives, so that we can be considered equal and use those people as role models? Can we give examples of people like myself who have busted our butts to be the best that we can be and use those as more examples? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I agree.
Part of the reason that, I spoke earlier about being very intentional with our recruitment efforts and wanting to make sure that we had representation of all kinds of people, we actually looked like a miniature United Nations in our school. But part of the reason that we do that is because we have staff and faculty in our school that our children can look up to. Anyone who's in the school, whether they are from, we have staff from South America, from Central America, the Caribbean, Europe, any child who's in the school can look up to any of the people who work there and see us as role models. We have been successful educators, we are giving back to the community, and we would like for our children to look up to us and aspire to be like us or, you know, successful in any other number of ways.
So it's time for us to close this session. What I will say to your answer is Banneker High School, across the street from Howard University, is an example where you have high-achieving African-American students who for decades have gone on to post-secondary institutions, have done well, and many have also gone to the military and directly into the workforce. I live in Richmond, Virginia, I'd say take a look at the community school. So there are definitely examples of that happening across the board. For the question here, we have a number of scholars here at our Department of Education, there are some books outside, I'll make sure that you get a book that looked at school finance and achievement to go online with your question. I know there are more questions in the audience, it is now time for lunch. Our panelists are here, so make sure to spend time with them. I would also like to thank Elizabeth Town College, there are a number of you here today, so I want to acknowledge you as well. And with that, let's give our four panelists a round of applause.
Great job. Sorry, I recognized the... A lot longer.
You didn't have the recommendations in the earlier one, I don't think.
Oh, no, 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 it's three times as long as what you were...
Right, right.
Yeah. Because I knew, I had to throw it together for the conference, I wasn't ready.
Hope you had a great lunch for those of you who are joining us through live stream, through AEI or through C-SPAN, welcome. We are now going to conclude with our third panel in our discussion about with all deliberate speed Brown v Board of Education too. First panel focused on courts and schools. Second panel was demography in schools. Third panel innovation in schools. And we have four well qualified people to help me with the discussion. Our first speaker is Gene Wade. He is the founder and CEO of One University Network. It is a company that will enable students globally to earn an education using a mobile device. Gene will tell you that he is a serial entrepreneur and he's one of the best in the nation taking very innovative ideas and making it applicable and available to millions of people domestically and internationally. And also have the pleasure to serve as a trustee at Patton University, a four profit university he helped found. Next we have Larry Wilder Jr. who is a special advisor to the Virginia Secretary for Commerce and Trade. He focuses on social entrepreneurship and innovation. He did the same thing when he worked as Assistant Secretary of Education in Virginia in the education realm. Where he focused on charters and lab schools but also the idea of public private partnerships through social impact bonds. And he's going to talk about that today. Third speaker. Third, we have Kara Boprov, who is the principal of the Native American Community Academy located in Albuquerque. She's a former teacher who decided to leave California and to return home to open up a school for Native American population. She will explain why. And her school isn't only a great academic school, but very innovative, and she was recognized by President Obama as being one of the nation's best emerging social entrepreneurs in the country. We will round out with the conversation from Susan Patrick, who is the president for the International Association for K-12 Online Learning. She's one of the nation's leading thinkers as it relates to online learning, having worked for the U.S. Department of Education in the Division of Technology. She also, in 2005, played a role in writing the legislation for National Educational Technology Plan for Congress. As with the other panels, each person will present. We'll then end with our last speaker, it will be Susan, and then we will open it up for a moderated discussion. So we will turn it over to Gene Wade.
All right. Good afternoon. Okay. My name is Gene Wade, and I, like Gerard said, I'm a serial entrepreneur. And just as background, I had a front row seat, like a lot of people, on sort of the implementation of Brown. In 1974, when I was in kindergarten, the courts took over the public schools in Boston. And if any of you read the book Savage Inequalities, one of the schools featured was my neighborhood school. So I had a front row seat on desegregation. Thirteen years later, when I came out of high school, the folks that led that effort rounded up a group of us who are now teenagers, and they said, we're going off to college, and they said, "We want some of you to take your, think about being social entrepreneurs," and sort of finishing what we started. Here's the secret. Here's the thing you should know. It didn't work. So we sacrificed an enormous amount to get you to this point, and the results aren't where we wanted to be by a long shot. The other thing they said to us is that even the schools that we sent you to, that we pushed hard to get you access to, aren't up to international standards. They're not working for anybody's kid. So some of you may have to rethink education, rethink the model. So there was a, and the way it was explained to us back then is there was this movement to end legal apartheid that sort of culminated with Brown, legal in this country. There was a move then to end de facto apartheid, and that was what happened, the second movement. That was what happened with the civil rights and the young students, the civil rights movements and the young students at schools like Morehouse where I went to college. There's got to be a third movement to rethink the institutions that we try to get access to, and that's your generation's job. And then the final piece of advice I was given was, you're, when I was headed off to Harvard Law School, you're 21 years old, you want to have an impact on the world. Think about where the world can be in 50 years, then ask yourself, what type of institutions do you have to build to cause that vision to happen? So it was a supply-side message. We need a different type of supply of institutions. It's not just going to be policies, it's going to be rethinking at the government level. It's going to be rethinking how they work. So with that in mind, I want to just give you guys some framing. I now work across the globe, helping, we're now in the process of helping top schools around the world offer degrees to people using their mobile device for a very low affordable price to this global middle class that's emerging now around the globe. And I want to give you some sense of context, because when I travel outside of the U.S., people seem to think that we're very insular, like we're missing the movie. And so Gerard mentioned this school, Patton University. This is my last anecdote, and I'm going to go through the deck. We launched this school. It was affordable, a few hundred bucks a month, got it off the ground, very, you know, really high quality, we could, we can hold our own with anybody. I got calls from international markets, from guys from international markets, and what they said was, "This is great, but you're missing the movie." It's, all of it's happening outside of the U.S. Then one day, some guy showed up, and it was like a friend of a friend's in town from China, would you host them? It turned out it was a, it was a company that was owned in part by the Ministry of Education, 5.4 million students, and all online, 55 Chinese universities. But not online, using radio and television. They're actually correspondence schools. Those are the largest schools in the world, in Deir al-Gandhi University. And so they're trying to figure out, how do we use the tools that are available to us to actually educate students at scale? And the last thing they said to me was, "I love what you've done in the U.S., would you do it over here in Asia, and could you put it on a smartphone, because no one has a laptop?" And that's why nobody goes to the school online. And a light bulb went off. Like, this is the white space that we've been looking for to make change. So let me just give you some perspective and put what we're doing in the U.S. in the context of what's happening around the rest of the world. Here we go. So higher education around the globe is at a crossroads, and it's got to choose what it's going to be when it grows up, and it's just about to grow up. Oops, sorry. Today, in every, every market on earth where the middle class, this is an ugly slide, but what it basically says is, any place the middle class is growing in the world, higher education, and education in general, secondary and higher education is growing faster. There's 165 million students in college today. Twenty years, they'll be, in 2035, there will be 523 million. That's more people enrolling in college, and I'm using college because that's what I'm working on right now. The same thing's happening at the secondary level. More people will enroll in college in the next 20 to 25 years than have ever attended college in human history. In 1970, there were 28 million people in college. So when our policies were formed, there were 28 million people going to college in the world. Half of them were in the United States. Twenty years from now, that number's less than 5%. So the movie, the action, the center of gravity around innovation, because it's being forced, is by necessity taking place around the globe. To meet the demand for that kind of growth, you'd need to build a school, the camp, the size of the University of Maryland, for the next 20 years, every day. Every single day, 38,000 people on average. And this is just higher education. The numbers are bigger at K-12. So what's happening is, the models that we have don't work for the reality that we live in today. And that's a great forcing function, because it makes you choose different spots on the chessboard, and you can't have the same old arguments you were having years ago about what's right, because what was, because both sides of the argument are probably wrong. What needs to happen is innovation. You know, I take Africa because I'm spending a lot of time there. Their school age population is larger than both India and China, as people don't particularly realize that. 10 million people applied to college. So that means they got through the secondary system, there's probably 30 million kids. Twenty years ago, that number was a fraction. There's only 1.5 million seats in higher education on that continent. This is what happens, this is what it looks like in real life. These are a bunch of people who stood in line. The University of Johannesburg had about 1,000 extra seats. They put out the word that there's 1,000 seats, or 800 to 1,000 seats. 11,000 people got in line and stood there for a day. There was a stampede, people lost their lives just to get an education. So this is real stuff that's playing out. So people are desperate to get an education, and they're not going to waste time on the arguments that, somebody made the quote of the adults getting their acts together, adults are desperate to get their kids educated all across the world. They'll stand in line for two days and risk their life. So observation number one, there's not enough concrete and capital to scale the current model up. We're going to have to go to mobile, we're going to have to go online, we're going to have to use new models and figure out how to make them work. And if we don't, the rest of the world will, and they'll do it without us. The top 10 in-demand jobs in 2015, they didn't exist in 2000, right? That's things like app developer, these bootcamps that have taken off. Those jobs did not exist. They're the fastest-growing jobs in the world. And they're not just here, they're everywhere, right? You know, and in the U.S., we've moved to an industrial, from an industrial economy to a post-industrial economy, but again, our school systems and our policies were built around a different world. So in other words, human beings understand narratives, right? Our storyline doesn't fit the facts anymore of what's actually happening, both in our country and globally. The shortfall of college-educated workers in the U.S., 5 million. So that's 5 million middle-skill jobs that we can't fill that are open, and this is, you know, widely publicized around the U.S. The shortfall of educated workers globally, 40 million. So the problem's even worse in other economies. You can't find the talent. So the vast majority of faculty at universities believe that their students are prepared for the workforce. This is a Mackenzie study. I know somebody, some folks are smiling, you know where this is going. But the vast, but less than, but less than 50% of employers agree. So we're not, is it, so my other observation is that there's this current model is out of sync with the labor markets. Again, built for an industrial world, a world that was very American-centric, now in a global world, that's not American-centric anymore. That's, that's the framing here. Finally, my final slides are just kind of a story. I want to tell the same picture in stories. This is, I think it's the late 1700s, that's George Washington crossing the Potomac, I believe, some British, somewhere behind him, in chase. Here's what transportation looked like back then. It's transportation now, right? You know where this is going. Medicine back then, medicine today. Lighting back then, right? Lighting now. Warfare back then. Warfare today. Communication back then. Communication today. Oh, by the way, everybody has one of these. Poor people have supercomputers in their pockets all over the world. That's what's happened in the last five or 10 years. Education now. The only thing you'd understand if you teleported from George Washington's times to today would be churches and schools. I understand the churches, I don't understand why schools still operate this way, at all levels of the model. So that's the context we're operating in. Right? This is what it would, this is, oh, and by the way, it's education, then it's education now, sorry, guys. That's what it looks like today. So what you'd see is, the only thing that looks the same. Observation number three, we're rooted in old seat-time models, right? Even in colleges, concept of time, we're measuring time as opposed to outcomes. So imagine a grading system where time was a variable and standards are constant. So instead of A, B, C, D, and F, and I'm going to tell you when the final is, on the day you start the class, how about A, B, and not yet? You're going to take as much, a little time as you need to meet the standards, but you're going to have to meet them to move forward. It's a rethink of the model that we need, more than just a policy debate about whether we're integrating our kids or not. Because when I look at this and I see what's happening around the world, we're just, we're about to get lapped, and we don't see it. Lastly, if education in the future would look more like this, be self-directed, people would be working on things collaboratively, independently, look more like a Montessori classroom, and finally, that's the same thing happening in Kenya, at a place where people develop software. So basically, the thrust of all this is, it's not just time to have the same old debate, it's literally time to rethink the model, and that's what I've tried to do for the last 25 years. Thank you.
(applause)
While they're changing, if you want to just go ahead and get started.
Yeah, well, thank you. And one, I not only want to thank Gerard and AEI for certainly having this today and inviting me to participate, but I definitely want to thank Gerard, because as he alluded to, we worked together when he was Secretary of Education. He was definitely one of the first and foremost to say, "If there's some idea you have innovative in particular, think outside the box, go for it." And so for that, I'm personally grateful. And so, one of the things that, as we wait for it to come up, and again, indulge, I put paired some notes, I have a tendency to riff, and so in light of the tight timeframe, you know, so that way I can stay on point. But one of the things that I wanted to share is that, to give some context towards the work that I do, as Gerard alluded to, is in the area of public-private partnerships, is, you know, give some context of what I'll talk about in terms of pay for success. And so there are certain things that our office is tasked with doing, and I in particular. And one is in terms of partnerships, we're looking to reform ineffective or efficient, or inefficient systems. And so in terms, I'm engaging in partnerships, not only with the private sector, but in particular, more and more with nonprofits, both at the foundation investor level, but also in the service delivery at that level. We're also looking to align these interests, you know, for the advancing of the mission of all partners. And basically, it's herding cats, which is painful enough, but actually bears fruit. A third area we look to do is foster entrepreneurial approach to problem solving. The current governor, Governor McAuliffe, he's an entrepreneur himself, and he's always challenging us to think outside of the box, and also to, don't be afraid to fail. And I don't know if I want to take him up on that, but what I've realized is that what the mantra, quite frankly, is, is an area of outcomes-based, outcomes-based programs and that are also data-driven. We also look to leverage the strengths of our various partners. It's not enough to just to check the box and say everyone's here and present, but I mean, what do you really bring to the table, and especially in ways that we can complement one another? We also look on building stakeholder empowerment, and by that, not only are we looking for programs or initiatives that can certainly address public problems, but to the degree that it enables the, our partners to continue the work, you know, in their order of sustainability, we're looking for those. And then finally, in the area of, it's a commitment to attainment of visual, visible, excuse me, measurable results. And as the old adage, if you can't measure it, it doesn't exist. And so we want to make sure we're doing those types of things. So in terms of pay for success, and what is it? Gerard alluded to earlier, he referred to them as social impact bonds, and so they're basically one of the same things. Social impact bonds are pay for success. I might use those terms throughout, and they're interchangeable. But what, one of the reasons that the term is morphed is because it's, it's not an actual bond, not the way that you traditionally think of it. It's not one that you issue that's paid for by the state in the traditional sense. And so that's why it's really considered pay for success, because at the most basic level, pay for success, it's a, it's performance-based contracting arrangement, and it's between government, social service providers, the investors, and all the partners involved. They're all aligned around milestones that are built in this, in this procurement contract. And by only paying for programs that are more efficiently, you know, these funding models that use taxpayer dollars more efficiently, we can direct programs to getting real results, and we're not just measuring the number of people that we serve. The pay-for-success arrangements do not require a predetermined intervention. What they're premised on is data-tested interventions. And so what we're doing in the, in the, in the previous way that governments may procure for services, we basically gave the scope of services. We want you to do X, Y, Z, who can give us the best price? Now, what we're trying to move towards is, these are the outcomes we want, and if you, if you can get there, go. We will get out of your hair. We just want to make sure you get there. Obviously, don't leave the target population in a worse place than you, than you encounter them. And, and, and it's, and it serves to set a higher bar, a gold standard, if you will, for not only the people, the entities we engage with, but certainly others that might be in that space. And what would happen is typically, private sector funders, they'll provide upfront financing for the delivery of these services. And so the model allows government to incentivize, incentivize public-private partnerships to tackle some of these social challenges that we couldn't do on our own. And so the pay-for-success mechanics, what I'll do is sort of walk through an example. This is one I'll use for communities and schools. It happened to be one that Gerard's familiar with, because that's the one we were looking at during that term, and one that we're looking at, quite frankly, now. For those who aren't aware, Communities and Schools is an organization that's based on, their, their, the goal is to prevent high school dropout, dropout prevention. And so what a classic example would be, they would use, they would come with data-driven to show, I mean, data, best supported practices, supported by data, that shows that they can reduce the dropout rate. And not only, not only show that they can do it, but through random RCTs, randomized control trials, and other regression analysis, to say that not only do we reduce the dropout rate, but we can attribute the, to our actions. It's not just an amalgam of 10 partners. We can actually say that we're the ones doing it. And so with that data, we, CIS might enter into a contract or procurement contract with a local or state government. And not only do, they would say it agreed upon, we will reduce the dropout rates from X to Y, and there's a direct calibration of that dropout rate to budgetary savings, cashable savings. An example might be an increase in daily, average, average daily attendance. Or it might be outside of an education budget, it may be in public safety, we're reducing, you know, the interaction with some of the high school youth, that if they drop out, they might get involved in drugs, crime, et cetera. But we can do a direct attribution to the dropping, the rate to budgetary savings of that governmental unit. So with that, the state might get into a contract with the particular, you know, with CIS to do this, and over a long period, maybe four or five years. And then CIS monetizes that contract. They build on that contract to get investors, particularly philanthropic community, through a, you know, program-related investment, to provide them the upfront networking capital that they need to do to carry out the mandate of the contract. And the bottom line is, if they succeed and meet certain milestones, the state pays, and the payment would be enough not only to pay for the actual work that CIS does, but to repay the investors with a return. And if you're talking about the philanthropic community, they typically are not looking for any type of return, and so they can take the money and then just replant it, or, you know, do, do the, I guess, reengage in another cycle of this type of contracting. And so the risk is offset to the private investors for this, and that's why obviously government likes it. And so in short, innovations are leveraging private capital, monetizing the social impact or outcomes of social services, connecting performance outcomes to financial return, and you get the better outcomes for your target population. This looks like a, it looks like a board game, actually, but it basically shows a sequence or a pattern of how these organizations work together. And what I, the biggest point I wanted to show is that even though this And what I, the biggest point I wanted to show is that even though this looks like a one, two, three, four, it's really the discussions that these partners come together pretty well contemporaneously. It's not like one has to happen, then you go to two. But it shows, it sort of shows the logic model, if you will, of all the partners and how they relate to each other. I know in this brief period of time, it takes a little time to wash over, it did for me, that sort of lays it out. And in the interest of time, what I'll do is I'll conclude on giving an example of how this has actually worked. A pay-for-success model, it happens to be in the area of early childhood, and it takes place in, in Utah. One of his first applications, it was in the area of early childhood education. The research showed that children receive high-quality early childhood education were more likely to succeed in school and less likely to need special ed services. And the idea was that in addition to these obvious benefits, there are more that go beyond just the reduction in special ed, but that was an identifiable, cashable savings that could at least incentivize, particularly policymakers to get involved in this. Obviously, there are other, third grade literacy, kindergarten readiness, but this was cashable savings. The plan called for United Way of Salt Lake City to be the intermediary, sort of like a general contractor, working with area providers to provide the services. Goldman Sachs and the Pritzker Foundation provided $7 million of upfront capital. And so the thesis is that the children who've been identified as potentially eligible for government special education were able to avoid tapping those services, then ultimately the state of Utah could pay the investors back with a rate of return. And it was a resounding success, and this is actually after one or two years. With fewer children receiving special education, this is just in one year, and this is just at the school district level, they were able to save, I think, a quarter, a little over a quarter of a million dollars. And that's, you know, at the clip of $2,600 per student. And this was based on $595, $595 low-income students. And the, the beauty is that a study showed that out of those 595 students, 110 had been designated as needing special ed services. But once this program was put in place, out of that 110, they found out only one needed the services. And so if you can multiply, you've got 109 times the $2,000, and you see the savings that accrue, and that's just, I think it was one, I think it was two school districts in Salt Lake, and that's effective for one year. And so when you extrapolate and build it out, you see major savings. And so the final point is that this was working so well that the state of Utah, they, they, they didn't even wait till the conclusion, they adopted and passed legislation to say, we're going to adopt this program now. And so to me, this is one of the classic examples of how this can work, and it's one that we're looking for in Virginia. Anyway, thank you.
Sorry. I've got a few you can skip through.
Great. Okay. Yatay, Shakara, Abraaf, Yenishay, Ashin, Ashley, Natani, Baschisheen. Good afternoon, my name's Karab Abraaf, I'm Navajo in Lakota, and I'm from Albuquerque, New Mexico. And I just want to say thank you for inviting us to us, all of us, all of our students and all of our families to be here today. But I appreciate that a lot, for sure. So, so I really wanted to share with you in the, kind of this opening time, the idea of building an indigenous education movement in our country. And, and I think that, I don't know how many of you have had an opportunity to work with Native American students or connect with Native American communities, but in general, I think that there's, you know, a really interesting relationship, unlike the relationship between, you know, when we think about like, the state educational agency and students and families and, and the quality of education. Native students and tribes have a very unique, I guess, relationship with, on a, on a federal level, that starts way back from just the entire time, when you think about kind of the treaties and trust relationship that has been established in our country. So I think that in itself is unique in that sense. It wasn't until much later that these state agencies began to have more responsibility for Native students. But I want to start with just kind of my, my story. I grew up in Albuquerque, you know, attended public schools for a very long time, graduated, went to our local college, and, and was a teacher and assistant principal in the school in which I actually went to, which was very enlightening, and kind of saw a lot of things that I felt as a student, and also realized that there was a lack of Native American role models, a lack of culturally relevant curriculum, and that also that there were different expectations for students within the same school. And I think that's probably, I don't know what your school experience was, but similar to, to many. I had the opportunity to move to the San Francisco Bay area, and I worked in a school in Moran County, which was also a public school. And that school had opportunities for their students like I cannot believe, everything from things to access to enrichment trips, a school that was really responsive to the community and the insights of the families and, and students there, as far as like what they wanted to learn. It wasn't a question whether or not you were going to go to college, it was which college were you going to go to? And I remember thinking to myself, this is like in November, one, I don't physically look like anybody here, but the second thing I also realized was that there was a huge difference between the quality of education that we received and we're continuing to receive, and what the students in this area were receiving for, for a lot of different reasons. And I started to think like, what would be the connection if we were to have something similar on the Navajo Reservation, or something like this in Albuquerque, New Mexico, or in San Francisco for that matter, or Oakland? So really started just to think about, like, what were the key components of that, that was, I guess, like, lifted up in that school that weren't necessarily in the school that I attended and taught at, and led, led for, well, part of the leadership team for a little bit? But all that to say is, I also had the opportunity to work on the Navajo Nation in a school that was just south of Shiprock, it's in between Shiprock and Gallup, very small rural area, spans an area of 75 miles geographically. There's not a lot of economic development in the area, you know, parents are commuting one and two hours a day just to come to and from work. And, and there I found, you know, when we looked at the community, there was, I guess, families and grandparents that had like cultural strengths that could be brought into the community similarly to what we saw in the other area. So I also began to start to think like, what do we do to draw upon those strengths when they were so absent and had been so much intentionally like, kind of taken out? So, so when we think about this, there's a quote in something that I read that talks about like segregation for, for Native students is really, the school system didn't necessarily separate them from other populations because of the unique relationship I was talking about earlier, but it really segregated them from themselves. So if you think about that, everything from their language, their culture, their families, it took that away, instead of kind of drawing upon that in order to make something that was really enriching for their educational experiences. So, so there's lingering impact and effects of that. Most of the students now are in the public education system, and our native students, about 90, I want to say 93% are served in public ed, so SEAs have like, the direct influence over them. The rest are served in the BIE, which is federally run, and also can be tribally run. So I want to flag that, I'll let you know in just a second why. But what we're seeing is that the lack of cultural relevance, the lack of community engagement, and the lack of identity development, and also the lack of high expectations and expectations that our students can lead and be the leaders of their community, has really had pervasive impact over a period of time. So, so I moved back home, and I'm Albuquerque, New Mexico, where I grew up, there's over 60 different tribes that are at our school, but basically, our mission and vision was to engage our community to create a school that supported students from adolescence to adulthood and all aspects of their, who they are, so that they're academically prepared for higher learning, securing their identity and healthy. We began with like, kind of a, what I want to say is like, drawing upon the strengths of our community by entering in the conversation first and foremost with like, we don't have a preconceived idea about what education should be. What are the values, what are the interests of our community, and how do we bring those things together in order to create a school that supports our students? So over a year and a half, we really engaged in the conversations, like, do we need a, you know, if we had a Native American magnet or charter school in Albuquerque, what would it look like? What would be some things that we know that work? What are some things that we know have not? So we listened to the narratives of different students and families and educators, business owners, tribal leaders, and thinking about like, what were those things that hold true for them, based on their stories? The last thing is like, what was the most important thing that we should think about in creating this school? And ask people really to narrow that down to like, one thing. And that's how those three outcomes came about, that students are academically prepared for college, that they're securing their identity and healthy. I saw that our job as educators in the community that were creating the school was really to take those narratives and ideas and make that something that's accessible to students. So this is our 10th year, we just celebrated our 10th year, so we're really excited about that. We also kicked off a network of schools called the NOK Inspired Schools Network. Our goal is to work with 10 communities in New Mexico by 2017 to launch similar, similar schools in very specific ways. We have three different kind of schools that are in operation now. One is a dual-language school that focuses on Navajo and English languages. Another that focuses on, sees the schools like the, the center point for rebuilding a community that kind of has the same, similar stories as other rural areas in the, in the world, about how there's been like a lack of kind of support for that community, they see that being like the driver to, to bring that back. And then also, some other, some other schools that will redesign and think about what it is that their families want, what the community wants in order to achieve education. Let's see. The one thing I want to highlight, there's a lot, is this, let's see here, is that there's, there's this unique kind of opportunity, and I think this is where the innovation comes into play, is that both in the public education system, you can develop a charter school and/or a magnet school, or, you know, school of innovation, but also tribes have the ability to, to establish schools. And so one thing that we do is partner with tribes in order to create schools through the federal education system. I think Secretary Duncan and Secretary Jewell have really looked at how do we start to promote more educational sovereignty, and that we reckon sovereignty of communities first. And so we feel like that's where kind of the innovation takes place, and the opportunity can grow from as well. I think that, that takes time, but it's also something that is, and I think a very important and essential aspect of serving Native students in order to strengthen their identity, give them access to language, fill the cultural gap, achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, however you think of that, in order to start rebuilding our communities from the ground up. So thank you for your time, and look forward to the other presentation.
I'd like to thank Gerard Robinson for inviting me into this conversation today. It's so important, and Jean, I really resonated with a lot of the statistics that you were using. We're the International Association for Online Learning, we're a nonprofit, we do work mainly in the United States in all 50 states, and we're asking the question, how do we ensure that every single student has access to a world-class education? And asking, what does a world-class education look like today, is very different than even 10, 20, certainly 50 years ago. We do work with more than 50 countries around the globe, and I wasn't going to get into any of the global statistics, but I just think in terms of K through 12 education, China has a goal to provide every one of its students with access to K through 12 education, and their goal is to reach 100 million more students in the next 10 years, and they're on their way for doing that. And they're doing that through giving their best teachers access to technologies and world-class internationally benchmarked academic standards and content, and changing distribution models. And that means building in community centers where there's support on the ground, but it also means being able to think very, very differently about how we get the best access to education to students everywhere. And the World Bank, the World Economic Forum, they're all looking at these trends that globally in the next 20 to 30 years, who has access to what we consider a world-class education is changing dramatically. In, in India, in the next 10 years, there's a goal to provide, there's a goal to provide universal access to K through 12 education, in order to do that, they'd have to build 200,000 new school buildings, they're not going to do that. So they're looking at whole new approaches. Now, when we, when we think about what the challenges are in the United States, it's very different. Our nonprofit was founded by leaders in school districts, even in, in states, trying to level the playing field for all students. So in Los Angeles, Los Angeles Unified School District, there was a high school student in 2006 who was talking to me about the fact that they were able to take an online AP government class in a school that did not access, did not have access to online AP government, with a great teacher in LAUSD, but just not in that student's school. In addition, the student said, if I hadn't had access to that online class, I was disengaged, I was not happy in my school, was getting ready to drop out, and not only did I take AP government, but I was able to access higher-level math classes that weren't available here, this kept me from dropping out. Here's the question, in California, in order to go the University of California university system, so the public university system, there are a series of classes that are college-ready classes called A to G requirements. 40% of high schools in the state of California do not offer the full range of A to G requirements. Those schools tend to be in low-income communities, and schools that have high percentages of African-American and Latino students in them. And I'll give you, give you another example in a second, but we're looking at the data and, from the Office of Civil Rights, of United States high schools as a nation, only 50% offer calculus. If you want to get into a competitive college or university in the United States, you need to have calculus on your transcript. Only 63% of public high schools in the United States offer physics. I was just in Moscow a few weeks ago, and they were talking about project-based learning and, and access to large loads of, of data from experiments taking place not only across Russia and Europe, but also drawing from data across the United States with project-based learning. Anyway, all of their seventh graders have access to physics. I was down in Mexico with the Secretary of Education in a middle school watching seventh graders do physics. Our level of expectation for what, what determines, does every student have access to a world-class education? When you are overseas and you come back and hear the arguments that are being made here, is really, it's alarming. And if you look at the second set of statistics, the United States high schools, the schools that have the highest percent of Black and Latino students, 25% do not offer Algebra II. Algebra I is the highest math class offered. 33% do not offer chemistry. In a world where we know that we can provide excellent teachers, high-quality content, and if the delivery model is online, we can close those gaps by flipping a switch. We can put programs in place, every student deserves access to highly effective teachers, every student deserves access to access the courses that they need. More than 30% of our nation's high schools don't offer AP courses. And in the schools that do offer AP courses, there's also, there's often a small number of students that have access to those courses. So when we're looking at education in the US, the 40% of high schools in California that don't have offered these A to G courses, there are a number of, of states, now it's about 10%, six states that are offering course access programs. We talk about school choice a lot, but think about choice down to the course level, where students can be in their communities and access the courses that they need to graduate. And this is a photograph taken from the Los Angeles Times on, on families that are protesting because their students cannot get access to the A to G course requirements that are required for the University of California system. With this, it's not just about online learning leveling the playing field, although that's certainly a solution, but it's about, are we designing our schools today around the research that we know how students learn? And that's a different question. We can use the tools in online learning, empowering teachers with data on each standard on how students are learning, and ensuring, as Jean said, it's A, B, or try again, that every student builds mastery before moving to the next level. It's about a system that's not around seat time, and by the way, when you're in international audiences and you talk about seat time, they don't know what you're talking about. Because their systems aren't built on seat time, their systems are built on bringing all students to level, a level of proficiency and mastery before they advance. And if, what do you do when a student's not yet proficient? They bring supports and resources around. There's no reason that community and schools should have to wait for a student to fail an entire course, an entire year, and pour all of those resources into a summer school that's three weeks old. Well, we can know throughout the year where every student has gaps, meet those gaps, and ensure that success is the only option, that failure is not an option. So the last point I'll make is, online learning is simply a delivery model, but a learner-centered system that has teachers with powerful tools to be able to personalize that instruction for every student's needs. You can look here for some data from Khan Academy in a school in California, where the student, when they entered, were at the bottom three students in the class. We know from brain research that we fill in, we fill in gaps from students' prior knowledge. So learning requires hinging learning on prior learning, right? So if we have gaps, if we let kids go through school with Cs, Ds, Fs, they're going to have Swiss cheese holes in their learning. And when a student comes in to And when a student comes in to, say, fifth-grade level, if we can fill in those gaps, we also know that students can accelerate. And in the blue line on the screen, that student that was third at the bottom of the class, once they filled in those gaps, was able to accelerate and catch up. So, we know how students learn. Are we designing learning environments around how students learn best? And are we making sure that we have a growth mindset in how we design our new education systems? Can every child learn? And can every child catch up? And we sure can provide every student with access to a world-class education today because we have the tools to be able to do it. So, thank you.
Jean and Susan both mentioned the international context, and it's worth mentioning that when the Brown decision was rendered, from an international standpoint, it gave the United States a better leg up to have a conversation about freedom, because many of the countries we were in competition with said, how do you talk about freedom for the world when in fact you had segregated segments of your population? So, there's still an international context. Susan, it's amazing to see the data, how many students have access or do not have access to physics. Even in the Brown decision, there was concern about the schools then not having access. It looks to me at least that online education is a approach, or an approach, to make this available. Why aren't more schools adopting it? What's the policy issue?
It is a fundamental policy issue. So, in the six states that have course access program, they're investing in making online courses available to students. University of California Santa Cruz actually had a program, UC College Prep, to offer online courses to students that didn't have access to them. But because of policies, because of policy debates, that program no longer exists. The need is still there, the demand is still there. And in many states, so 32 states today have, at the state level, a state program with licensed teachers at the states, usually with eight or more years of experience, trained to teach online, working with teacher, working with students statewide. Number one reason that otherwise don't have access to these courses, but there are long waiting lists even to take online courses because of the policy issues around funding, around whether they have, whether they have access or not.
Jean, what higher education level lessons, international, can we adopt at the K-12 level to really push the kind of innovation to prepare against Brown's grandchildren for a very different world than 60 years ago?
Yeah, I think you've got to line up our, you've got to line up our education practices and look at the market that students are going into. What does the world look like that they're going to be in? And really try to set the standards around that. And I think there's this, this push and pull around whether we actually do that. But we've got to start with a set of standards that aren't, and look, the standards, we don't get to decide the standards. The marketplace decides what the standard is. You get to meet it or not meet it. So, you've got to, you know, we've got to aim students and look at, what are the best students in the world doing? How are they prepared? How are they trained? And then what tools do we have? And I think we've got to let data drive the conversations and not ideology and emotion. We just can't afford that anymore. So, some of the solutions we're going to see are going to come from places that are non-obvious. And so, I think one of the things we have to do in policy is actually make room for that. So, when you're in a crisis, like the slides I showed you, you're more inclined to actually open the door to innovation, because your house is on fire, so let me try this water thing and see if it'll stop my house from burning. Hmm, let's try something else. Maybe we'll try sand. And I'm, I mean, but you're open to it. I think we've got to open the door and create space for innovation, and then use rigorous data to say, does it work? And when it does, just like with the impact bond, you know, then you move on it as soon as you have the information, because we are in a crisis, we just don't know it.
It's interesting, you mentioned the part about chaos. September Clark, a famous person, not only for civil rights but for women's education, said that she thinks, believes that chaos is a gift, because through the chaos, you actually get the creativity. So, we're in line. So, Larry, familiar with communities and schools? Richmond Public Schools, first one in the nation to be certified for CIS. Richmond, high-poverty school system, all the challenges that we know. What can we do from your work on social impact bonds? What can we do to make the public and the private sector see that this is important to do for all Richmond and all, really all public schools?
Well, that's an excellent question. I mean, one, and I'll sort of do it in parts, just with the communities and schools, literally we, you know, our governor formed a children's cabinet. Many states have different versions of them, but ours, and one of the, the last cabinet meeting we had was communities and schools making a presentation. And one of the things they were talking about, and these are, you know, people and personalities I've been engaged with since, you know, during our time together, but the bottom line is, they want to, they were enthused then about this concept of pay-for-success, social impact bonds, and so they want to do it Richmond. It's not coincidental that a lot of where these things need to occur, they're in these high-poverty areas, Richmond being one, some of the localities, I could put Norfolk, Petersburg, I mean, they're well-known frankly. And so, what we find is, these are, and they're, they're, they want to go to those areas. And so, one of the things that we're doing at the cabinet level is trying to work with the local, I guess, the local service providers and local elected officials and policymakers to let them know of this. You know, we're trying to encourage them, because in this educational system where, since it's balkanized, as we heard earlier today, we're trying to figure out, where does the state, where can we assist versus locality? But we're trying to publicize it as best we can to let them know, here, you know, we've, the data's there, we've got the service provider, let's go, let us, and it's difficult. A lot of times, what you're doing to bring it, the education, it's not necessarily with the masses, per se. It's really with, and there is an entrenchment that sometimes is just befuddling, you know? I can't explain why, but we're trying to let them know, here's what it is, there's no risk to you, you know? And here, we've got, you know, entities that are willing to come in, they're well-regarded, like communities and schools, to the state, to the degree we can offer and bring in partners, we want to do that. So, that's what we're doing, at least in Virginia, trying to let these particular localities, bring them aware of it, and basically make, look, we've got all the partners ready to go, just agree to it, let us try it as a pilot project.
We'll continue to watch Richmond, because I think some great things are going to bubble. They've got a forward-thinking superintendent and board in place. So, Cara, you've got a great school, you're the leader there. What I often hear from opponents of charter schools is that you're going to create quote-unquote charter schools that are racially identifiable. It's all Black school, all Hispanic school, predominantly white, maybe a couple of Black or children of color. Have you heard any comments about how does your Native American school, does it perpetuate the myths or the concerns about Brown? Or do you see this as education first, and then we go from there?
Yeah, I think, I think we start with kind of the mission and vision, sorry. I think we start with the mission and vision and what it is, the desires are of the local community in order to create the school first. And whatever the, the structure or system is to support that, whether it be a charter school or a grant school led by a tribe, is what comes second to promote that. I think that the mindset of understanding, like, there's a lot of diversity within Native American communities itself. So, at our school, we have 60 different tribes, 14 different ethnicities. My nephew's Navajo, and he's also French. Thinking about, like, kind of getting further and past that, just like there's this blanket Native American population, and within that comes a lot of different things thereafter. So, I think that's, that's one thing. I think the second thing is that taking the idea of true, I guess, educational sovereignty into, to the, into, I guess, like, account is really important, both to tribes and Native communities in that sense, is that if we wait for something to come that's going to be better than what we already have, it's probably not going to happen. So, really need to think of, like, what is the, what are the values, the language, the culture, the history, the governance, the policies that we want to teach? And then how, what's the best delivery model? So, some of our schools are focused on STEM, some of our schools will be focused on dual-language models, some of our schools will, you know, have access because of where they're located to online courses. It just depends on, like, what the right kind of, like, support mechanism is for that. But I feel like it's really re-energizing and bringing in the strengths that we have had, like, kind of removed for a long period of time in order to, to, I guess, support our students in being successful.
Very interesting theme about community, because on our first panel, Stephanie had talked about the importance of community. Online education, innovation in education, traditional public schools, what you're doing, charter schools, what you're doing, some people believe that's great, but it's going to only lead to further separation, that kids online are not going to interact with children of different ethnic, racial, religious backgrounds. Some believe that to be true. Are we at a point where we see innovation in online education promoting or furthering separation, or do we see it actually changing the definition of what it means to live in an integrated society? It's open to anyone. Well, since you said hmm, we'll let you go first.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'll put it, my experience is, and, you know, although I like to think I've seen and done a lot, it's, they're certainly limited. I think it's a little of both, frankly. I mean, Gerard and I were chatting a little while ago during lunch, you know, there are certain players who we both know, I'll let them remain unmentioned, but they're policymakers, elected officials. And that's the argument they put up, that, you know, look, this is just further separating. Even though you think it's innovation, it just serves to drive a wedge. And, you know, and so whether it's true or not, if they say it and people believe it for all purposes, it is. And so, we encounter that quite a lot. And sometimes it's frustrating, because frankly, I think it's more for more craven reasons that they say it, you know, not because it's really the truth or that they even believe it. So, in that sense, but I would also say that when we talk to some of our stakeholders, especially the ones that we're looking to do some of these projects like Pay for Success, they're excited. And these are entities or people that run the gamut, from public sector to private sector, you know, underserved communities, wealthy communities, the whole bit. And it's almost as though there's more excitement sometimes outside of government about that than within. And so, that's the experience, at least, that I see in Virginia.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
Sure, I just think it's really important when we're looking at these new models that we're designing for equity intentionally and putting that up front. And this idea of innovation for the purposes of equity and what that looks like. Also, the achievement gap today is being measured by a single once-a-year test, and in some of these environments, we have far more data. The achievement gap is actually far bigger than the achievement gap data that we're looking at today. And I think we need an honest conversation about this, because empowering communities to have conversations about our communities, what do we want success to look like, and what is the data that we need to know that success, would probably include some bit of testing in places to see, but it would also include a lot of other information that would give us a much clearer picture about being honest about the achievement gap, because right now, it's, it's like the emperor wears no clothes.
You bring up a good point about introducing equity to the conversation, because it has a broader definition. I have one more question, then we will open it up to the audience. Brown and the campaign to make it a reality was able to take place because of public and private philanthropy, mostly on the private side of the fence. Philanthropists from New York and other places played a big role. In the work that you do, online, public-private partnerships, and your charter school, philanthropy is equally important. What role do you see philanthropy playing in the next 10 years to try to, A, keep the spirit of Brown alive as relates to making sure that more children have access to quality education, but also pushing, I would say, the boundaries of what it means to be an educated person today? Anyone can go in any order.
I'll, I know one of the examples that, that I see where philanthropy is, you know, they call it the term venture philanthropy, but where there's engagement, instead of the model being, instead of it just being, we'll put out grants, say, 100 grants a year, and it's a one-time grant, and there's really maybe not that much follow-up from the grantees, what it is, is there may be longer-term engagements for higher-dollar amounts, almost like a venture capital model. So, in other words, instead of doing 50 grants for 1,000, I may do one grant for 50,000, or even more, over a five, six, seven-year period. And what they're demanding of the people who they put the funds in is, is outcomes. You know, in other words, we want to see measurement, we want to see where this is going to address a particular outcome, as opposed to we just gave money. One of the best examples I can think of is, it's, I think it was a new venture fund, new school venture fund out of Boston, Kim, I just drew a blank on her name, Kim Smith, right? She's now with Bellwether.
We all know her well.
Yeah, but that's, that's one of the ones, I used to get excited about them, because it was using a model, philanthropies were getting involved, and they can see quite, quote-unquote, more bang for their buck. And there's pressure on them to show that they're making an impact. So, I see that model, I see it being more, higher engage, working with the, I guess, the service providers, you know, not only in terms of money, but helping them assess their mission and whether or not they are actually meeting it. So, it's a higher, longer-term, higher-dollar engagement.
Jean, you've, you've seen the venture capital side of it.
No, I've seen both. I mean, my, my. My first company was their first investment.
Right.
And so, as a, as a for-profit. So, we, I mean, I've seen the model works. I think it's going to play, it's an important part of going into spots on the market that there's not an efficiency, where the public sector, for policy reasons, won't touch it, or capital markets won't do it because there's too much uncertainty, because of what's happening in the policy arena. So, there's this place where philanthropy can help drive innovation, and I think that's what we need, is to see more, more of these quote-unquote experiments grow up. Some of these things that are really big today, when we started charters, they were an experiment, you know, and now they're a part of the conversation. And so, we need some of these experiments to grow up, and it's going to take early-stage philanthropy to go into those, you know, to go into those spots in the market in creative ways that are outcome-based, so.
I would say, kind of the long-term look at, like, also the coupled, like, values and also belief within communities, and committing to that community over a period of time, and really building capacity, and kind of like pulling out the ideas that are working on the, I guess, I don't want to say, I guess, the grassroots level or the community level, in order to think about, how do you then take those to, you know, to, I guess, like, a broader audience for sure? But also realizing that it's a, you know, if you think of the next 10 years, and I think of some of our students that are in elementary schools now, that'll be graduating and headed on to, like, their next step, but what is the, what's that, what's going to be dramatically different about the next 10 years for their experience, and where is that going to lead us? And I think that's where I see philanthropy playing the role as far as supporting that innovation, but also asking those questions now to really engage people at all levels, not just necessarily the organization or the institution, but really thinking about families as well, and folks that surround education spaces.
And I would just add that philanthropy plays a role in giving some space for innovation to take hold. And so, there are, there is a coalition of the willing out there that wants to engage in these really difficult, complex conversations about what does it mean to design a next-generation school that has dramatically improved results from the one-size-fits-all, one teacher with one textbook with 25 kids? And when you think about creating some planning grants for space to design that, some launch grants, and even to change the metrics, changing the metrics goes a long way to showing what's possible. So, some of the next-generation learning challenges, grants, schools are having impacts of 1.7 years of growth, 2.3 years of growth in a single year. And like, what happens in a classroom when you really redesign the entire support model for students, for educators, and empower them with the data? And what does that mean? And kids in a classroom of 1 to 25 students talk about their student-to-teacher ratios as 1 to 1 and 1 to 8, because they're constantly getting one-on-one attention and in, and in small groups. And that's really exciting, so philanthropy can really help with that space for innovation.
Great. So, we're going to open it up for Q and A. I've also made sure that we would try to get at least one question from the internet. There's a hand up back here.
Hi, I'm Jason Russell with the Washington Examiner. My question's for Jean and Susan. You talked about, you know, online learning a lot, and it seems to me like that is possible and could do well in most subjects, but when you, Susan, you talked about chemistry and physics, and that seems to me like an area where it is necessary for students to have a laboratory, so they can learn, you know, laboratory skills and experimentation skills. So, when it is necessary for, you know, physical capital like that, how have you been, you know, what challenges have you had there, and how have you been overcoming those?
Sure. And there are a number of programs. It doesn't mean that you're not using books, it doesn't mean that you're not using equipment. Many of the programs that are online learning, even if the school itself doesn't have a, have a lab, will set up so that the students can engage in experiments, they can engage in project-based learning, hands-on learning, even if the licensed instructor in physics or in chemistry is at a distance. And so, there are ways of managing that.
Yeah. And I think in today's world, online doesn't mean alone. So, you can design a system and a way to interact, and just think about what we're all doing now. Everybody in here, who doesn't have a smartphone, raise your hand? Right? Okay, you're like the one, the one, you don't have it with you, you left it in your car.
One of our panelists.
Right, it's like, I raised my hand, exactly. Oh, you're one of those guys. Yeah, my brother-in-law does that. But he, he's a math teacher, but I'd be, you know, the, you know, but generally speaking, these environments are getting more powerful. You can build community, particularly with mobile, because everyone has it in their pocket. So, you're starting to see more. to see more. But what I think happens is there's a lot of stuff that you couldn't do before that you now can. And, and so it's like the 80/20 rule. You'll have some places where you have to have, you know, people come together officially, formally, and you're going to have parts of it that you allow the, the environment to mediate that in a way that it couldn't even five years ago. So, yeah.
It's also worth noting that George Washington University, they have a campus in Northern Virginia where they have an online degree in nursing. It's definitely a place where you need to have labs. So it's also a blended approach, which I know both of these are involved with as well. So glad to see that. Here's a question, I think the gentleman here. Yes?
Well, a great panel and a great day. Thank you all for really wonderful interventions. I'm Barry Stern. I'm a former federal and state official, currently advising the Haberman Educational Foundation. Winston Churchill famously said, "You can always count on Americans to do the right thing after they've exhausted everything else." We've certainly tried in this country. Everything from busing to compensatory education, spending hundreds of billions to try to narrow gaps, to better technologies, to charter schools and choice. And we've really, we've really made efforts. We still have these persistent gaps, especially in the lower-performing 20 to 40 percent. What I'm wondering about is, we haven't really looked at what goes on in the traditional school. And I think Gene raised the industrial model, secondary school, and to a lesser extent, middle school, where people change what they do and with whom every 45 to 90 minutes in response to a bell, with different teachers and different work groups, different subjects that are totally disconnected, and where the teachers rarely talk about the students they mutually teach. And how can we blow that up? I mean, I tried to get something, I, I offered to the superintendent of the Richmond Schools not so long ago. I said, "Would it be worth anything to you if I could get you two grade, two-plus grade levels in two or three months? But you got to change your schedule. You got to have kids out there four to eight hours a day, much like an after-school sports team or music group. And I can get you two or three grade levels and 80 percent placement at the next level in college or, without needing remedial, remedial education." And to a, to a, to a district, you know?
Okay, sir.
They're not willing to do that. So what do you, what can you do to, as Tom Pezzant used to say, to blow up the current secondary school and try something else?
Thank you. Oh, that's me? I mean, look, I don't, I mean, I don't know if we need to blow it up, but we certainly need to. It, it's a policy discussion. It's part of what's been the conversation we've been having kind of all day here today, which is, you know, the first thing is you create room and incentives for people to do it. So a lot of these policies, they're just security blankets. We've been, we do it because we've been doing it. It's like the credit hour rule. We do it because we don't know any better. And it was invented for a model that doesn't exist today. So I think we've got to, you know, number one, we've got to create powerful incentives for people to actually leave their security blanket, for policies to change. And it's going to take more than some conversations, and it may take, I think more choice is going to help. I think parents may not want to be, like, my folk didn't want to be civil rights activists, they just wanted to get me an education. And so they voted with their feet. They didn't have time to do that. So we, we want, right now, for, and you saw, I think someone put up a slide of the parents protesting, saying, "I need A through G." The rest of the parents were at work. The ones who could protest protested. So we've got to create incentives, and I think they've got to be market-based incentives. That's my short answer.
I know, it's, since you mentioned Richmond, I always thought that's what charter schools were sort of designed to do. In other words, let them be sort of the R and D. So you may say, "Look, here," and a charter school, say that maybe in Richmond, they have a certain curriculum or approach, and if it works, then ideally, the rest of the school district, or at least a large part of it, could adopt that. But just getting a charter school, you know, we have its policy problems just doing that. I think, I, I think at one point, we only had like five in the entire state. I think per capita, like Wyoming probably had more. And Wyoming, I mean, not to be disparaging, but they don't have that many people there. And so, and so just fighting that battle to get that approach is hard. And I, and I don't, there's no magic answer, but to me, that seemed like that would be one of at least the possibilities to show how this can work, at least quote-unquote on a pilot basis or a limited basis, so as not to scare people.
Anyone else want to weigh in? Question in the back?
Abdul Kareem Ewing Boyd, Elsie Willow Stokes, and BSLI. Again, I, I, I'm, I'm wondering about the, where do, where do HBCUs, where do women's colleges, where do, so I'm, I'm thinking specifically about the, the HBCUs in North Carolina, which are responsible for more African-American and more first-time college graduates than, than the, the rest of the North Carolina system combined. I'm thinking about places like, places like Sitting Bull in North Dakota that's responsible for Native Americans having access to master's degrees. Where do these schools, where does Agnes Scott, where do these schools fit in to this new online, this new online situation?
I mean, I think they're going to have, look, they have the challenge as universities. So if you're a non-public university and you don't have an endowment, you're in trouble in the U.S. You just are. You're a tuition-driven school right now in a market that's shifting and where the prices are too high. And people, at least the consumer feels like that. So I think there's going to be a shift in model. I think the, the, these schools will have to redefine at least a part of their mission to embrace these new models in order to actually be viable. Or they're in for a long-term crisis. And I'm working with some HBCUs right now and seeing, it, it's more of an identity issue than it is, can it actually be done? I mean, just think for a split second, let's play an exercise. When I started school, and this is a short answer, but interesting, you know, when I started school, they, University of Phoenix and the online schools, not that they're bad or good, but they didn't really have a large number of students. Today, there are more graduates from those schools than there are from all the HBCUs put together. So the numbers are big. So imagine if these HBCUs had embraced that market opportunity and moved forward. What would the world look like? What would, what would have happened to them? Right? So these, these things don't come to you in neat packages. No one's going to walk up to you and say, "Hey, here's the future, send a really neat package, sign up for it." It just doesn't work like that. It's messy. And you've got to take a leap. And that takes leadership and a board structure and people that are willing to kind of look forward and embrace it. And the irony of it is, these are schools that were built just like that. That's why they existed. They created themselves out of nothing, basically with very meager resources at the end of slavery. So I think there's a, there's a, let's go back to what they were invented for, and let's do innovation one more time. It's kind of what has to happen. But it's at the sort of identity level. Yeah.
And it's worth mentioning as well, to your point, Gene mentioned, he's a graduate of Morehouse, I'm a graduate of Howard University. You now have HBCUs, Howard has a charter school, you have others who are thinking of doing the same thing. But a number of them are also starting to partner. So you have United Negro College Fund now partnering with Walton, and now you have UNC Walton Fellows, BAO had one this summer, I think one from Dillard and one from Clark Atlanta. And you also have the Thurgood Marshall Fund to work with the public. HBCUs are starting to broaden their scope, working with not only the Urban League, but other areas. And so part of, we saw in Brown, to make Brown a reality, it was almost a civil society approach, not only having government, but bringing in the faith-based community, bringing in the nonprofit sector. They moved forward to, to make that happen. And so we're going to see that happening as well for innovation. Question behind you.
Thank you. My name is Amara DeCure. I'm an educational leader and researcher. This conference is great because it really promotes the idea that for solving the solution, for coming up with solutions in public education, we need to have an interdisciplinary approach. So I see today, we've had the legal approach, the economic approach, policymakers and nonprofits. What I'm curious to know is what role do you seek to promote to involve practitioners, teachers, principals, school leaders, and researchers to help further the concepts of economic innovation?
I'd love to take that. Our nonprofit was created in 2003, and it's, it's fairly unusual because it brings together educators, practitioners, researchers from, from higher ed, also colleges of education that are working in the innovation space, as well as state departments of ed and policymakers. The vast majority of our members are practitioners. But it's really cool to be able to create a space where people that are thinking differently are challenging each other, but also coming together under a common goal about transforming around student-centered learning. And I just think that, that, that notion of sharing across fields doesn't happen enough in K-12 education and also in higher ed. And, and I, I think, just the last piece that's really missing, and we've been involved in policy discussions at the federal and state level, that there are so few of our communities that are engaging in these policy conversations that we really, I think, have to have a, have a commitment for those of us that are deeply committed to K-12 education to find better ways of empowering our communities and also within the federal policy discussions and the state capitals.
And I think one, one thing that was really interesting was that having the ability to have the time to, to engage in other ideas and getting outside of the school that you're leading. So I was a principal that was very much in like a large school district, working in a variety of different schools and small school districts as well. But when I had the opportunity to get outside of my school and then begin to engage people in those conversations and learn about different ideas, innovations, you know, commitments, things that people valued in, in, in the community, but also were thinking about, that helped change my perspective about how to think about leading folks in school design. And so I think anytime like teachers and school leaders have the opportunity to like kind of step out for, for a bit, listen, and also think about what it is they want to do and have the time and space to then come back and, and then make that a reality, that's really, really helpful. And I know design centers are doing that, that, that's one step in that direction. But just having the time and space to do that, as well as philanthropy, who supports that as well.
Well, we've actually reached the end of today's event. Before I give closing remarks, let's give our panelists a round of applause. Thank you. Today, we've had an conversation about courts and schools. And 60 years ago, they played a tremendous role in removing Jim Crow from the front seat of the classroom, out of the classroom altogether. And yet today, we still have remnants of things we don't like, and the courts and lawyers will play a role in making the change. We talked about demography and schools. And the demography of America today, the demographics, very different than 1960, surely will be different 60 years from now. So there's a role for social scientists, for parents, nonprofits, and others to be involved. Here's an opportunity to really take a civil society approach to making schools work. We've had our last panel on innovation and schools. We know that in order to deliver a quality education as we know it, it will take place in traditional schools, but it will also take place outside of school buildings. It will take place virtually, it will take place in blended learnings, but there will be conversations taking, taking place across both the Atlantic and the Pacific Ocean. I'm excited. I want to thank all of those who were involved in putting this on. Want to thank AEI for its support of open and honest conversations about education. I also want to thank again all of our panelists for carving out time to talk about Brown and 60. And I'd like to end by at least thanking in spirit one person who made all of this possible, who grew up in Washington, DC, who went to public schools in this city, and that's Dr. Charles Hamilton Houston, who was the legal architect for what ultimately got rid of Jim Crow. And I want to thank him and the spirit and all of those of different faith, religious, and other denominations and persuasions to make this happen. So with that, thank you, and we will now close. Okay. Good job. Your statistics are amazing.